Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the, what's today, June 4th, 2019, the Board of Selectment Meeting. It's a little bit after 7:00, we're gonna get started. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great, we'll get started with some walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins?
Yes, there is. Hello.
Ma'am?
Freysh Legel, 9 West Gate Lane. How are you guys? Welcome, Karen.
Thank you.
9 West Gate Lane.
What can we help you with?
I was just looking for an update on the Egypt Beach parking lot. I have several friends who are extremely irate at the slow progress. I have some pictures on my phone, people have been driving on the packed sand. And I just wanted to know what was going on.
Sure, so I'll give you a quick synopsis of what happened, and then I'll let Kevin...
I mean, I know what happened, I do apologize.
Give a quick...
Can I just apologize to Kevin? I did go looking for you today, down at Town Hall, and I had a family emergency. I did wanna just talk to you about this. My apologies.
No problem, I'm right there, anytime, stop in. If you're gonna stop into me and talk to me about the styrofoam recycling...
I'm gonna talk to you about a couple things, thank you. Poor guy.
Well anyways, it was not the town's intention to have that parking lot nonusable on Memorial Day weekend.
Right.
What happened was, the contractor that came in to do it, fell behind schedule because of the weather, and then he came in and he dropped, I don't know how much material it was, but the material was bad material, so we had to have the material tested. It tested poorly, and he had to pick it all up and go and take it away and bring new material in. So, that's really what caused the delay. We didn't wanna have the parking lot made improperly, so it got delayed. Right away, Jim talked to me, he decided to have a shuttle set up, so we had a shuttle service for the whole weekend, from the school to the parking lot. Did anyone use it?
Only a couple people that I'm aware of.
Okay, a couple people used it, so, but it was there for people to use. I think people still use the beach, there was at least one good day, and parked along and on the streets and walked over. So, again, sorry for the discomfort of not having the parking lot available, but it was because of the contractor, not because of the town. That being said, what's the...
Sure, so the parking lot's been sitting, I know there's a lot of chatter on social media, even though I try to say often that no work is being done, the parking lot's been sitting too dry out. We're down there today, the contractor is scheduled to put the base coat down tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
Once that is down, when there is no construction, people will be able to park on it. We will still have to put in the water line. We'll do that after the base coat is, because it's easier to do the trench, it's cleaner and a neater job, put the water line in, so the water line will go in, top coat, and striping. But once we put the base coat down, people will be able to park on it when the construction is not ongoing. So that's scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay, it's supposed to rain today and tomorrow.
Weather permitting, so...
So, would it be scheduled for Friday, if that, it's the next clear day?
It will...
You know, that's like getting a contractor to do your bathrooms. You're gonna be there, you know, you sign with the contractor, move favor. We hope to get them up quickly.
How much rain do we get? If we don't get a lot of rain, then we can go right on the pavement. If it gets soaking wet again, it's gonna have to dry out.
Sean?
If, no matter what happens, can we just make it open for the weekend?
At this point, Kevin, as long as it's not too wet, if it's dry, they can go on the pack.
Alright.
We're preferring to get the base coat down, but as long as it's not. If it's wet, they gotta stay off it. Yesterday, Kevin was walking on it, there was movement, Kevin walking on it, everyone like driving cars on it, so...
So who's gonna make that determination on a Saturday?
We'll make it on Friday.
Okay.
If that's, if it's not paved, we'll make that decision on Friday, and we'll put an alert out.
Okay.
Okay, and if I can just clarify for a second there, when they built that parking lot, it's on over 12 to 10 feet of peat, so there is movement there. So one of the things that we did in the design process is, we dug out a foot of gravel, over a foot and a half of gravel, brought new dense grade material in, and we also put a fabric down to help secure that, so that it would settle, it wouldn't move around, and we wouldn't have the problems that we had, like we had in the past. That's why the asphalt was all cracked up. So, you know, we asked for people's patience, we have to get the water out of there for it to work successfully when we do the paving and the base coat. We did the same thing down in Humrock, that parking lot worked out great. We're hoping for the same results, but, you know, the only way to get around that is to dig out all that peat, that'd be a much bigger job. So, so that's the direction we were going in. We are hoping to pave, as we said, tomorrow, and we'll go from there.
Okay, and it'll be on the website, right?
Yeah, it'll be on the website, and, you know, one of the other things, the water line, what we're doing is, we're gonna put a shower over there too, so we're running a one-inch water service over there to bring it to the shower, so peat can use the shower on it.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, any other walk-ins? Alright, seeing none, we'll go to the report of the town administrator.
Sure, the first one, as we was around most people where, we did have a fire down at the marina today. Boat caught on fire at the fuel dock, after fueling up. Due to quick action by one of our harbor masters, John Ward, some other volunteers, they were able to pull the boat off the dock and get it on a mooring. People working on the gas pump themselves had the presence of the air to shut the gas off. So it could've been much worse if the boat had stayed on that dock, or if the gas hadn't been shut off. Family of five transported to the hospital. Not serious injuries, but a bunch of different injuries, husband, wife, three children. At least seven town employees, two police officers, and I believe five harbor master staff were taken as a precaution for smoke inhalation. We don't believe there's anything serious there, but the stuff that comes off a boat fire is pretty, pretty noxious, so they wanted to go get checked out, I haven't heard back at this point, their condition, but we're not expecting anything to come of that. This could've been a lot worse, ironically, they just finished up the exercise there that they were doing on an oil spill in the harbor, and the staff had left, otherwise they would've been there. But I know we've seen a lot of noise about the boat we're buying, the fire boat. This is a good explanation as to why we need that fire boat. If the gas had gotten into the harbor without being shut off, there'd be a lot more than one boat down there that would've burned. So, we got lucky, we're lucky that the people weren't very badly hurt. But a very good job by the harbor master staff, the fire department, the police department, and a lot of people that were just working down there that helped out, so we got lucky on that. Town Hall, just an announcement, Town Hall will be closed this Friday, June 9th, yeah, June 9th, for training. We will be doing training with the Citewright Police Department for de-escalation of situations and modified ALICE training, ALICE is Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. Training in schools for active shooters and people in the building. It'll be followed by a walk to each department by the Citewright Police Department to look at the individual offices and talk to the individual staff about their concerns of security in those offices. This is not in response to the Virginia Beach shooting, this was scheduled before, but it is a good time to do it. We apologize for any inconvenience that people might have, but there's no way to train the entire staff without closing the building. I know people think, not here, not in Citewright, but as we're seeing, it happens everywhere. This is training we need to do, and then it will be done in every other location around the town for each one of our offsite buildings. There's an update on that, the security that we approved at the Town Meeting will stop being installed this summer. Egypt Beach Parking Lot, we did the Cedar Point Engineering Project. We awarded a contract to Woodward and Current to do the additional study that the board requested. Woodward and Current is a very reputable firm. They were suggested by one of the Cedar Point residents to use a firm like Woodward and Current. They are currently not doing any work in town. They are the engineer for the regional sewer project, but they are not doing any work for the town of Citewright. The study will look at the following alternatives, do nothing, low-pressure gravity, low-pressure system, complete replacement of the existing gravity sewer, and a complete gravity system replacement with a shallow gravity system and any needed pump stations. The final study will have a cost estimate and feasibility for each alternative, an explanation of the impact, a forecast of removal of inflow and infiltration for each alternative, estimate for service lifespan of the alternative, estimate for ongoing maintenance cost of each alternative, and a final recommendation of the alternative which aligns with the goals of the project to remove I and I from the sewer system, factoring in lifespan, cost benefit for each alternative. And the final will be supported with a narrative as to why they chose it. The timeline is uncertain, it's gonna be based on tides and weather, so... But the contract for the project that we hired has given us at least a 90-day extension at this point on this bid. So, the hope is, Kevin, that we'll have it done in time to either act on that contract or just cancel it outright and move on to a different alternative. The water we may replace on Oceanside has commenced, the contract is installed, the temporary lines down there now. Once those are done, we'll go to work on the new line. That is scheduled right now to be completed before the fall, so sometime before the end of August, we should be done with that project. It will be on Oceanside, and then it'll go up Turner for...
Up Turner, we'll do Man Hill, and then we'll do a bunch of services on Gat Road and Robtown. So, they'll be there all, all summer and into the fall.
So we have completed our flushing program for the season. We will do flushing on a case-by-case basis if certain areas are having a lot of trouble with brown water. We put on alert today, there was a fire in the harbor. Residents should expect that there may be brown water, because that's gonna really stir up the system with all that water use. But, we're done for that for the year, and we will be getting from the water department a list of where the flushing was done, how much flushing, how much ice pegging some will be cleaned, this, the springs, so we'll have that.
Will that be at the next meeting that we'll get that?
I would like to say yes, but I have to, I will try to get it pulled on by...
They've been, actually, the bottom half's been chasing a lot of leaks the last couple weeks. We've had a lot of leaks...
And there's a lot of some turn offs too, so...
But we'll get it as soon as we can.
Okay.
Wind turbine?
Just one question, can you, just for one minute, explain why Oceanside's paved halfway? It's not at our expense?
Yeah, the Oceanside paving, the, the single-lane Oceanside paving was a requirement when the gas company put on the gas line. That road is in horrendous shape. This is not paving, it does make it a lot better, but this was required of the gas company and paid for by the gas company. That will actually give us a real help, Sean, as you're aware, when we do the paving of the road itself, and it goes nice base coat on that portion of it. But it does give at least one way on Oceanside a nice ride, but it's gonna get pretty dug up this summer when we do all the services. So that was not at the town's expense, so we didn't pay that.
That's, yeah.
Wind turbine, the turbine was down last week for repairs for the energy converter. It's back online. The turbine has missed, according to AL, has missed its production quota for the operational year number seven, April 18th to March 19th, due to the problems last August. Citewright Wind LLC will credit us about $34,000 for the value of the production shortfall. Brings the total net earnings for the town for the year number seven to $280,874. The noise testing, we have completed one night of noise testing. We'll have to wait until the conditions are right for that testing to continue. The engineering firm will do those as soon as they are right, once we have right wind and the right speed conditions. We notify Mr. Dotty and anybody who has the actual testing instruments on their property that they'll be coming out and doing that testing. We have three more to do, so there's a total of four.
How many, how many residents have, oh, I'm sorry, how many residents have...
I believe it's four or five different locations.
Okay.
So do we expect that in the upcoming weeks, or what, because we're coming into the season?
Again, Tony, it depends on the weather, on the wind direction. We are in our summer hours for the wind turbines, so when the wind's blowing from that particular direction, the wind turbine will be off. That's starting June 1st, so we are in that, the summer containment has started. People probably noticed the public safety complex has our new sign up. Right now, it's just putting the weather and the time. We are working on a policy that we'll bring to the board as to who can post and what can be posted. I think it's gonna be pretty popular, so our proposal will be to limit it to town business and town business only, but we'll be getting that to you either the next meeting or the meeting after that. Recount for the seniors, sorry.
Go ahead.
Recount for the senior center override has been filed and certified with the town clerk. The recount will be June 20th at noon time in the high school gym. It is open, but only those who are registered can participate. So you can go and watch and stand outside and watch the recount. It is deadly dull, but it is, is available if you'd like to go. Finally, on a sad note, I'm sorry to report to the board that Cole Hawkins, a 30-year karate instructor at the recreation department, passed away suddenly over the weekend. Cole touched hundreds and hundreds of lives in this town through karate and through his activities. He leaves behind a wife and three adult children, and he will be sorely missed, known by the recreation department, by the residents of the town. I got that from Mark Lancy today, so I wanted to pass it on. I don't have any details as to the service, when I get there, I will pass them off. But condolences to the Hawkins family for the loss of Cole. That's what I have for that day.
Does anyone have any questions on any of that stuff? I did wanna talk, one, oh, go ahead.
What's it gonna cost the town for a recount?
About $5,000.
In your opinion, how many votes will change?
Opticon scanner, not more than a handful, at the very most, two, three, probably.
So am I missing something? So we're gonna spend $5,000, throw it out the window practically? One person requested this, or signatures?
Signatures, there are required numbers of signatures from each of the precincts, they have to be certified.
When they got, when they got...
They got them and brought them in and got them certified in time, yeah, so... Generally, on a, on an opticon, which is what we use, the scanners, they're...
And this person knows that?
Pretty accurate. I couldn't tell you, Sean, I don't know, but I've done one with these. When I was in Linfield, I think there was a two-vote change, so...
And we take all the people that do the early voting, and we put it through the scanner also? So they're all being scanned, right?
Yep.
Well...
People who absentee voted, those get fed into their precincts as the election goes on.
So I have some of the same thoughts as Sean on that, but it's their right, and they're, they're able to do it, but hopefully by doing it this time, and if we see that it really doesn't have any impact when we use this type of machinery, that maybe it'll, you know, have people think twice before doing it again. Any thoughts on that? Nope? The, the only thing I wanna talk about is the sign in front of the public safety building. So we talked about that a while ago, and I didn't know, you know, there were some discussions of whether that'd be a distraction at that intersection. I mean, it's kinda set back further than I thought it would be, but I didn't know that we had planned to go forward with it, did anyone?
I had the same thought.
So, did that, did we actually vote to, because I know there's a grant for it?
I'm not sure the board had to vote on that.
Okay.
It came before the board on more than one occasion with Chief Murphy.
Yeah.
But it was approved by the building committee as part of the project, so I'm not sure what I had to come back to you, because unlike the library where you control and we made with those funds, this is part of the building committee project, so I don't think it came back to you for approval, but it definitely came to you for, for discussion on more than one occasion.
Yeah. Alright, well, I think, I think we just have to take into consideration, you know, that that's kind of a touchy intersection anyways, any distraction? Because right now, the colors are, you know, bright red, bright blue.
It's red and blue, obviously that's not gonna stay. But mostly, it's gonna be used for announcements for the town, things that are going on, weather-related emergencies, stuff like that. We're not gonna have, you know, we're having a popcorn social at the, at the field that the dock parks doing, stuff like that, we're not gonna be putting on there, just, gonna get too busy.
The only other, you mentioned flushing's done now, because the water's not going over the top anymore, right?
We, we plan to flush for the month of May, so we finished that. We are getting into the summer season, so we're gonna start conserving the water.
Good, you said the wind turbine, the recount, what about the field, the building?
Meeting tomorrow.
Meeting tomorrow, to see, great. Awesome. Any other things for the town administrator?
Yeah, could I ask, is there someone in charge of programming that sign, that knows how to...
That's gonna be part of it, police will have access, fire will have access. I'm gonna have access, and probably Kevin from the DPW will have access.
Well, because I'm just thinking that I think what's bothering some people is it doesn't quote-unquote "look very good", but I suspect that you're able to manipulate what the message looks like, what the backgrounds are like, how often they change, so...
Yep, that's all programmable, yeah. So, right now, we don't have anything to put up there except police, fire, time, and temperature.
Yeah, it looks a little amateurish, so I think that's fixable, correct?
But I wanna get the policy, get the policy approved, then we'll stop putting content on the sign.
Good.
Thank you.
Alright, so, moving right along, before we go to the first item, I just wanted to let everybody know that there is an item at 7:50 for Go Green, the water connection fee, that that is not gonna be discussed tonight in full. There was some stuff that they had to get done before we were gonna get to that, and I spoke with the owner over there today, and he's done some of it, but he hasn't done all of it, so that'll be back on a future agenda. So if you're here for that, and you don't wanna sit here for everything else, it's gonna be postponed. Alright?
Good to know.
So, 7:15, our item is a Hocker Pedder's license, the coffee, the Beacon Coffee Truck, Shane McNamara.
Hi, guys, Tom.
How are you?
Good, thanks for seeing me.
What are you thinking?
So, it's a, it's essentially a food truck. However, there won't be a lot of food served on it, it's mainly a beverage dispensing unit, so... I'm gonna be serving nitro brew, cold brew on tap out of a kegerator, and hot coffee, and kombucha, and carbonated tea. And that's really it, otherwise, it's all gonna be pre-prepared food. If I do have food, it's gonna be things such as donuts and pastries and things like that. It's pretty basic, I'm not, no cooking in the vehicle, no, nothing crazy.
Have you done it before?
I have not, no.
Got a picture of the vehicle?
I do have a basic picture. Let me bring it up.
I have more up-to-date ones, I recently had a, had it fully vinylled, so it's, it's got all the, it's fully decal. I can, I can update those and send those over, so you guys can see them.
So we read what you wrote, but why don't you tell us, so everyone can hear, what are your intentions with the vehicle? What are your, what do you wanna do? What are your hours, where do you wanna be?
So right now, the basic business plan, I was informed that there was a hot dog vendor at the Citewright Lighthouse that had recently given up, given up his position, so...
Oh, he did?
I put in there that I chose to be at the lighthouse Friday through Sunday as the primary spot. I believe I put eight to one as the hours. And then, aside from that, I kinda wanted to operate in the form of the, an ice cream truck. I know the laws are a little different for, for ice cream trucks, where they can travel around, however, they can't set up shop in one spot. They can stay as long as the line forms, and once that line is exhausted, they can move on. That's kind of how I was thinking of operating throughout the week. Main places I wanted to hit are obviously beaches such as Minut Beach. I didn't plan on doing Peggity, however, I heard there was someone else that recently was gonna do that, but recently backed out as well, so that's, that's an option too. But my basic plan is, right now, to start, because this is gonna be a, kind of a, you know, a second job for me, is just the lighthouse, so, and just with the hours that I already provided.
Karen, anything?
No, we said cold brew, that's tea, I assume, right?
No, cold brew coffee, yeah, it's just, it's just brewed in a different manner.
I remembered brew, and I was like...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I think it's great to have an ice coffee truck. Now, the person that left Peggity, is that the...
It was Oral.
The Oral truck, they're not going there anymore? Okay.
They're not gonna go to the Sherr's.
Okay, that's what I, I want.
If I talk, I'm just over at the lights.
Okay, so it's certainly within that. Just with our whole environmental initiative in town, what types of cups and straws do you propose to use?
I had, everything's recyclable. The one compromise that I made, I got paper straws, even though there's not a huge following for them, a lot of people dislike them because they tend to fall apart.
I know.
However, I tried to find the best ones I could with the best ratings, and I still went with those instead of the plastic straws, but everything else is just your typical solo, there will be recyclable barrels outside the vehicle where people can dispense their, their trash and stuff like that.
Okay, great, good choice.
Yeah, and then I, the other thing I put on there, if you're curious as to where I'm gonna be getting the products, some of you might be familiar with Red Eye Roaster in Hangham. Bought weeks, he's a great guy, knows a lot about coffee, so I'm gonna be getting all my coffee products through him, so if you like his coffee, great.
Well, I asked my 20-something what she thought of a, having iced coffee at the beach, and she's like, "Mom, it's a no-brainer, great business."
Well, that's how this came about, I, I know you probably saw it in there, but I actually grew up on Surfside Road, so we'd be there, every, you know, we'd argue as to who was gonna jump in the car and go to, you know, a different coffee store to get iced coffee for everybody, so... That's kinda how this came about.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do too, I think you're gonna have a great market. So I, forgive me for not knowing this, but we, the hot dog vendor was there sort of permanently?
No.
How did that, I mean...
Never be there stationary?
No, I know, but they stayed stationary in the parking lot.
I only saw, I mean, I used to see him there, I don't remember what times, but I know he was there.
I see him on my beach, so I'd, okay. No, I think it's a great idea, and just the trash was my other concern, is to make sure that there's enough service to, that there's, it doesn't go on...
I do plan on, I, currently doesn't have them, but I do plan on adding decals on the vehicle. It'll say, you know, "Please recycle," other recycle symbol on there. We'll try to make that awareness as much as possible.
Just good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Do you wanna read when he's gonna be there?
After I talk.
Okay.
But you can have a little bell, so I know when you're coming by.
A bell, yeah, I might put a megaphone on there, yeah.
I'll put, I'll be there.
So I, I like the idea, I, I do question sitting there on the weekends from eight to one...
Okay.
And how the, how the neighbors feel. I really didn't love the hot dog guy sitting there either, but I didn't know if there were any neighbors here who had any thought about it. You know, that's, that's my only concern of...
Right.
That, you know, if you're driving around and you're selling, just like everybody else, I think that's fine, but to actually have a station, I mean, it's like a store...
Right.
And you got Sand Hills that's only...
Right, three below.
So far down the road that sells a lot of coffee, that may not be thrilled with...
Right.
With, you know, you guys not going there to buy your coffee like you were doing last year. So, any thought on that, I, I mean, that's, that's really my only concern. I think if you drive and you, you take your business and you drive to the next one, that's fine, but to really not have the bricks and mortar of a place, but have the, the, you know, the benefit of, of the, of the location is...
Well, our policy does, well, for ice cream trucks, or something, another store sells, yeah, three or 400 feet, and then the ice cream truck can only stay 15 minutes, but I don't know if Robin King's could stay, I think we allowed him to stay all day.
But he was at Peggity, not at the lighthouse.
No, but we've allowed it, the, the policy says you have to move, right?
For ice cream.
Yeah, so this is kind of outs, outside of that. And I applaud the effort, I don't, I don't...
Yeah, no, I understand your concerns.
I live down there, so I don't really have a, a problem with that. I just wanna make sure that the neighbors aren't gonna say, "What's this truck doing sitting here for four hours every day?"
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I mean, I'm open to the fact, like, if it becomes an issue, I'm more than happy to accommodate, like, it's, it's, you know, I, I know the traffic there because it's kind of a one-way, it might be an issue. But I think the one good thing about coffee is, majority of the time, it's like, you're gonna get it and go. You know, especially where there's not gonna be any seating, a lot of people walk that area, that was kind of the idea behind it, so...
And it's just discuss, we're gonna talk both sides of the issue.
Yeah, no, I totally understand.
Any, anyone have any thoughts on that, or no problem?
Yeah, I actually think that a place like Egypt Beach would be a really good place for a truck because there really isn't anywhere around there.
Yeah.
What's the place down there? Dads?
Yeah, it used to be.
It's not within, not walking distance.
It's pretty...
Well, it used to be walking distance, now it isn't.
I thought about that, but places like Peggity and Egypt, if you're a beachgoer there, you can't see over the dune, so they, they really wouldn't know my presence other than people going down to the beach maybe with the product.
Well, you want, the, the traffic is gonna be at the lighthouse, people going off for morning walks and that sort of...
Yeah, mainly, I wanna get morning people who are going down there, you know, a lot of people, I mean, I do it myself, they'll, you know, go to the boat landing and watch people put boats in, and then they'll do their, you know, we call it the Citewright 500, then you go down to the, the lighthouse, and you walk down there, for the most part, you move around, but...
Alright, well, if you guys don't have any concerns, you can make a motion.
I don't, I mean, we had hot dogs a same distance, and the general store serves hot dogs, so I don't really see a big difference.
I think his product is a little different.
Yeah, so I don't...
No, we did have a couple complaints.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
But I'm not concerned.
But it was more with the putting the chairs and putting that stuff out where you're all...
No seating, yeah, and there's, there's a question of the generator, I, like, the noise, because I thought of that too. I outfitted the truck with a very large inverter, so a lot of it can be powered I outfitted the truck with a very large inverter, so a lot of it can be powered from within the truck without a generator being used all the time. So that'll take that away from the noise.
Well, if the board feels good, then we'll just, you know, if people complain, we'll have you come in and...
Yeah, I'm more than happy to accommodate anything.
Motion?
Move to, oh, go ahead, Karen. Move to grant the Beacon Truck, good name, a Hawker's Pedler's license, seasonally, April through October, in accordance with the selectmen's policy and inspection by the Board of Health.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Any from the audience?
I just have one specific question.
Just, excuse me, just your name and your address.
Yep, Freyish, label nine, West Gate Lane. Can you look into compostable solo cups?
I can, yes. I, we've researched this thoroughly, although there tends to be a...
Are they more expensive?
It's not really expensive, because I'm okay with the expense. However, there's not, the reviews on them are not great due to, like, breaking down and stuff like that. But I will look into it further. If I can get them, I'm going to, believe me, because I'm definitely a green goer myself, so as far as, I'm a big surfer and stuff like that, so I'll look into it as best as I can for you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? It's unanimous. Great, good luck.
All right, thank you.
Wait, do we need to do...
Couple of them.
You're not done yet.
Okay, okay. Starting to slide.
That was for the license, and then we have to approve the hours and the dates. Take them separately?
They do them together, I think.
Okay. Move to allow the Beacon Truck to park at the Situate Lighthouse parking lot, April through October, Friday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and July 3rd and 4th, Wednesday and Thursday, without moving the vehicle to another location. Also, move to allow the Beacon Truck, weekend afternoons and weekdays, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., to drive to the public beaches, Minut, Egypt, Sand Hills, Peggity, and Humorock, to serve customers and to move on.
Discussion.
Second first?
It says 8:00 a.m.
Excuse me, did you say 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.?
Oh.
That's what. Isn't eight, it says eight, I think, on mine. Oh, sorry. Amended time for weekends and afternoons, 8:00 a.m. Is that the one I screwed up?
Yeah.
8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I'm glad you're paying attention.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Any from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, five to zero.
Good luck.
When are you starting?
Thank you very much. It should be full effect last week in June from that point forward.
Don't forget your picture here also.
Okay. And there was, there was a few things on here that I, there was three items missing, but they're all currently done. I just have to give them over to the...
With the help.
Board of Health.
No, to administrator, yes.
Great. Thank you, good luck.
Good luck, yep.
You made a lot of 20-somethings happy.
I know.
Great. Moving on to the next item. This is a discussion vote for FEMA disaster consultant contract. Sean McHarden. And Kevin.
Adrian Kabucha.
My guys, good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
What? Start, who wants to start?
This is a follow-up contract to a lot of the FEMA work. We've done a great job up until now, and going forward, the suggestion was from MEMA to start getting a consultant involved in getting everything closed out and get everything going. A lot of it's reimbursable, and they'll help us get grants and everything else, so this is the next step in the FEMA process. So Sean and Danny have been working hard on this. Danny's been doing a lot of work on this to get us to the point where we are. Now we're looking to go to the next step and get a lot of these going. So that's the award of this contract. Anything?
Yeah, just through the process, I guess, again, like Kevin said, it's a MEMA recommendation that we involve a consultant at this stage in the process for reimbursements. So with their assistance, we prepared an RFP for solicitation, as well as a list of engineers to involve. This was posted in the Central Register of Combys and the newspaper as well. And we did receive two proposals back that were independently rated throughout the DPW and the Planning Department, as well as Kyle, part of the Coastal Resource Officer as well, and selected Tetra Tech as our consultant moving forward. Although this is written for an annual contract now, this will travel over several years. We're right now managing the projects with their costs and the impacts to the town. So we're going to move forward slowly. We'll be before you with each of these construction contracts as we move forward. They're being permitted and designed right now in portions. The cobble berm right now is closest to permitting and probably the easiest construction to date. And then as we start to move towards the cliffs, access always becomes an inconvenience to move around the cliff on the revetments. But reimbursements are some of the hardest parts working with FEMA, and this will accelerate the reimbursements, which I hope Nancy will take heed of. And if you look on the board, that's some of our project worksheets that have already been obligated to the town for the different portions of town and their damages. We're still working with MEMA and FEMA to evaluate Riley. So Riley's numbers haven't been included yet. Right now, to date, we're up in the 18 million for damages.
So this is really work over four storms, major storms that have hit us over the last 10 years.
Since 2012, yeah.
And it is suggested by FEMA, it's reimbursable by FEMA, so 75% of the expense of this consultant is reimbursable expense. So as with all FEMA projects, we only have to pay 25% of it, although it adds up to a lot of money. And I'll just be kind of an on-the-street person that's going to help manage through these projects.
Correct, yep. Through the paperwork, the reimbursables, yeah, they'll be pushing this forward. MEMA brought on a consultant for Situate at their expense four or five months ago, and it's amazing how fast he's making the wheels turn. He's working for MEMA, and the processes are moving through MEMA incredibly now, and hopefully this consultant is going to do that exact same thing for processing through Situate, through MEMA to FEMA.
The only thing I'd add was, you guys ranked the guy with a perfect score.
Yeah, independently, I noticed that too, yeah.
So he got fives on all categories. I've never seen that before, so he must be a strong candidate. Sean?
Let's just get, so it's for the last four storms, then it's also upcoming storms, so that we kind of have them in place in case we should get another storm.
They'll help us with, you know, computer software, our programs, or how better, they'll help us train so that we stick to a FEMA format when we're reporting. So the guy out in the field, if it's Mike Breen or one of his form, and the form he uses is the exact same 304A boilerplate that FEMA needs, instead of changing it back and forth afterwards and trying to recreate it.
What about using this firm to prevent if they should see something in our town that might raise a red flag?
Sure, yeah.
That could cause a problem for another storm down the road. Could they help us be better prepared? Is not a non-emergency.
Right, yeah.
Is that something that...
Absolutely, yeah. Their availability of staff is, they have someone that'll handle, they have coastal experts, they have administrative experts, financial experts, as well as contracting. Yeah, they're, they have the ability at their fingertips to bring someone in. So this will be a time and materials basis. They will be coming to town to evaluate where we're at now, where we're moving forward, so absolutely, and like you said, training and looking at our efficiencies, how we report damages.
Along those same lines, lifelong resident at the bottom of Alden Ave called me, I think he's been into CU, Sean, recently, Jerome Minahan, and he's concerned, because he's lived there his whole life, that the seawall, it was really just riprap, it was never a complete seawall.
Yeah.
It's over the years, the storms have kind of lowered it. So he feels that his house is very vulnerable to another storm, and I don't doubt it, because I grew up in that area. So something like this, could they look at something like this area?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
As an example.
Yeah, no, because we will be doing coastline tours to all of these sites that we have project worksheets for.
Great.
Riley, and like you say, looking at vulnerability in the future.
Right.
What was that, Alden Ave you said?
Yes, bottom of Alden.
Mara?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Sean, are they going to help us prioritize, or have you already prioritized? I know you said that Egypt Beach, the berm restoration was probably the first project, right? Is that the berm you're talking about?
The berm at Musquash, yeah. There were no damages in Riley, so any claims that we are holding on that are done. We're holding project worksheets for that. All it is, is bring the material, and there's no permitting required. Local conservation permitting is it.
Okay.
So to beef that berm back up to where it was is the simplest, and probably the least expensive out of all of the moving forward.
And then my second question was, you have the date 2021 on several of the projects. Do we risk losing the reimbursement if we don't get started on these projects by 2021? That...
In talking with MEMA, we need to start moving on the construction of some of these to show FEMA that we are acting, and that we will ask for an extension as those approach, knowing we have one or two or three of these projects underway behind us, that we're working towards it, and that the town can't handle a financial impact of all of these in a single year, nor could be accomplished.
Yeah, I mean, that's, or that's a lot of work to do in two years.
That's right.
You couldn't do it all at once, you know.
So they're going to help us keep these in the pipeline so we don't lose...
They'll be tracking all that and doing extension letters and everything else and working with FEMA, so we don't lose out on anything.
That's good.
Definitely.
Yeah, extensive experience working with FEMA when you read their proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have one more question. Sorry.
Ms. Curran?
I'm not going to apologize. Will they also, will this FEMA representative also take a look at our emergency management plan as well? You know, I know we've had a lot of commentary from other FEMA people that have come through with regards to our operating manual and our procedures and making sure it's updated. Are they also going to look at that when they're here?
They can. That's one of the options. It's a time and materials contract, so if it's something that we want done, we could request it and have them, have them look at it and do an evaluation of it.
Okay.
So that...
They're not FEMA people, these are the consultants that we hire, right? They're not from FEMA.
No, they're, it's an engineering berm that's...
They know what FEMA requires.
Yeah.
And that's what we're saying with the templates. If they have a certain template set up that we could do, we, it saves us a step from transferring the form. Maybe there's already an electronic template that we can do and submit immediately electronically, you know, right from the disaster point and save all that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen, do you guys, do you have anything?
No, I guess my only question is, if we're asking...
Can't say no when then ask a question.
I know. Forget that. We've got a, we've got a proposal up for 300,000. If we start adding things, it will cost us extra money, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I want.
Yeah, so they'll do anything we want.
Right, that's what I was thinking, I would too. It's a not-to-exceed, is the contract.
Yeah. Anything, Karen?
No, I agree with Ms. Curran that, yeah, if we come up with efficiencies, they need to be wrapped into our documentation so that, you know, I mean, I know you'll do it anyway, but that's important.
I mean, I think that's not the intent of this, right? The intent of this is to manage these, the construction of these projects.
Right.
It's to manage the projects, and we also want to streamline. We don't, we're not necessarily setting up, you know, specialties, because FEMA will change it probably by the next time, you know, we have something. But, you know, they will, they will help us, they'll work with us. They actually, they sent the representative up here today who came for the meeting, just in case there are any highly advanced questions that's in there.
And my point is, there may be another contract that we'd have to do to do this other stuff, because I don't want to hit up against this, which is really meant to manage the projects, because we want them to look at our, this or that.
One of the other options that they said is they could go after FEMA grants or MEMA grants and try to get money to make those updates or do some mitigation or something to that effect that could be helpful, so...
No, I agree. Obviously, we wanted them to prioritize to get this stuff done, but while they're here, I'm sure they can take a look and make sure that...
Get time and materials, we can do whatever you'd like.
Our processes proper.
Yes. We can definitely use that expertise to leverage additional resources, by all means.
We'd just, we'd like to see what we could get for grant money. Maybe we could find some grant money that would pay for it. And that's one of the things that they'll do. They'll hunt grants out to get them more work.
Yeah.
Okay, kind of a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract to provide FEMA consulting and grant administration services to Tetra Tech Incorporated on a time and materials basis, not to exceed $300,000, $75,000 of which will be town responsibility.
75%?
$75,000.
75% of FEMA, 25 for the town.
Is this number incorrect?
I'm sorry, I'm okay. Yep, no, I'm good.
Is that okay? Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none, any from the audience? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no's? None, it is unanimous, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When do they start?
Yeah, they're right here. We're going to get going on it now. You have to sign the contract, though.
Raise your hand.
I'm Chrissy with Tetra Tech.
Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item. We are talking about the Inspection Department Permit Fee Schedule. Permit fees for new construction and compensation for outside inspectors. Bob Vogel and Brad.
Hi.
How are you guys?
Good. How are you?
So we got all your material?
Yes.
You can give us an overview, and then I'm sure people have questions and...
Sure, I'm just going to give a very brief, kind of high-level overview. Bob's going to dig into a little bit more detail about the backup that you received. So leading up to town meeting in 2018, I was actually questioned, or requested by the Advisory Committee to look at all of our, all of departments within planning and development fee schedules, so not only building, but planning and conservation as well. To be quite honest, I'm not quite sure why I was asked. That was almost two years ago, but I do remember the conversation with Lincoln at the time. We did that, we collected, again, all of the fees we have for permits and other related fees for those three departments. And I believe we also did a comparative analysis to surrounding towns, just to kind of see where we fell in the mix. Following up on that, Bob has done, Bob and Bob's staff has done a much more in-depth, I think, analysis of, because as you can see, there's many more permits and approvals issued by his department than any of ours. So they've done a detailed analysis of surrounding towns, including Marshfield, Norwell, Cohasset, Duxbury, Hanover, and Hingham. And what we, what we noticed in particular when looking at the Building Department was that these fees have not been touched in over 10 years. And as you all are aware, the fees that they collect feed directly into the town to help support the services that the Building Department provides. So it's important to keep these fees current in order to, again, support the department that's working to issue various approvals for, you know, not only town residents, but for folks doing business here in town, to make sure that we're responsive. And as, I'm sure Bob will get into a little bit more detail, we have seen an uptick, and I think we project to see quite an uptick in the next few years in the department's volume, given Toll Brothers, Stockbridge Landing, and other projects. Those are just the big projects, but I think in terms of our kind of standard, single-family development, those are trending kind of on course, or as they have been for the last few years. But some of the bigger projects, we're seeing a lot of those on the horizon. So, we want to ensure that the department has the resources it needs to continue to do its job, you know, given the expected increase in volume. So, with that, I'll go to Bob. He can give an overview of the kind of details, again, that comparative analysis, and then see if you folks have any questions.
Thanks, Brad. To Bob. Mr. Vignani, the board, thank you for being attentive to this. The material that I sent out is fairly self-explanatory, I think. We're actually asking you to consider and vote on two, two aspects of this tonight, A and B. C is more or less informational and contextual, if you will. I mean, one of the reasons that we'd like to look at adjusting our fee schedule and the, the way that we compute permit fees for new construction is to allow us a little lea, more leeway in compensation for our inspectors. The fee schedule, as Brad mentioned, the last change, talking with Neil, and we have actually records of this, last changes for the building permit fee schedule were in 2005, and the last changes for electrical, plumbing, and gas were made in 2007. So, fairly high sort of increase, if you will, in not only building costs, but, but our, our own internal costs since those dates. And it did feel as though the adjustment that we're talking about tonight is pretty justified and, and probably actually overdue. If you look at the spreadsheet that was developed, and I apologize for some holes in this, but we got as much information as we could from as many sources. As you can see, we've hit all the surrounding towns, and we've tried to simplify it so that it would make some better sense. A lot of these are developed from formulas that are percentage-based and things like that. So, in a couple of areas that we don't have numbers, it's because it's just more complicated than will lend itself to this presentation. But I think if you look at the spreadsheet, you'll see that the new residential and new commercial, of course, are the two largest components of the, the permit fee sort of account. Your $10 per thousand dollars of construction cost, so that means two things. We have to calculate or be, be given by the contractor or applicant the construction cost, and then we, we use that to calculate the eventual permit fee. A couple of surrounding towns, Duxbury and Marshfield are at $11 per thousand. The rest of the surrounding towns are at $10, $10 per thousand, as we are. For commercial, you'll see the difference is actually larger, where, for instance, Marshfield, Norwell, Cohasset, Duxbury, and Hingham are all more expensive per thousand for those commercial fees than Situate charges. And then the smaller fees, demo, occupancy certificates, stoves, tents, that kind of thing, we also tend to be in the low, low range of that, of that spread of communities surrounding us. Talking about this with, with Brad and Jim, and thinking about it internally as well, it seemed as us, to, to me at least, that Marshfield was a fairly close fit to Situate, demographically, socioeconomic profile, that kind of thing. And of course, many of the contractors that we deal with also deal in, in Marshfield. So, rather than go over the projected or proposed fee change item by item and make it a long-drawn-out situation, I really do feel as though we could feasibly and justifiably adopt Marshfield's permit fee schedule as Situate's. It would add approximately 10% across the board to our total income, depending, of course, on, on number of fees and size of projects. But it's, it's about a 10% increase, if you look at it simply fee to fee. So, that's what we're proposing you consider this evening, and hopefully vote positively on.
Great. Well, that was an easy way to look at it. So, if we look at this chart, just so I've got it.
Follow Marshall.
You want to just raise it from 10 to 11, whatever the Marshfield thing is?
Basically.
The significant ones are the bottom ones, the plumbing?
Yep.
You want to talk about those a little bit? And why we go from 30 to 100? I guess that's a one-time fee, so.
Well, it's a one-time fee, and it doesn't depend on the size of the project or the cost of the project necessarily. So, if you're, you know, building a new house and your plumbing contract is 40 or $50,000, you know, this is a one, a one-time fee, which doesn't really amount percentage-wise to a tremendous increase. And as you can see, in this case, Situate's well below most, if not all, of our, of the surrounding communities in the fees that we, that we, we charge. Plumbing is a good example of that. Electrical follows the same general trend, although our differences aren't, aren't as great in, in the electrical area.
Any comments on, on this? Karen?
Um, just on the, on the in-ground pool, I have a couple of questions about that, one for Bob and one for Brad. You wouldn't propose reducing that one to be on par with?
Probably not.
You know, keep it the same?
Yeah, I mean, you know, frankly, we do a dozen or 15 in-ground pools a year, so.
So, my question more for probably Brad and the Planning Department is, given the, I mean, I, I know the people, when they build a swimming pool, they bring in the trucks to do all that, but a lot of people, you know, might be topping off, or should we think about maybe having that fee a little more aggressive to, in line with our conservation issues? I don't know if it's a real thing. Jim doesn't seem to think that topping off is that big a portion of it, but.
Explain topping off.
When you have a pool and it evaporates, and you have to put more water in, where do you get it?
Rain.
Rain. We do have that. Okay.
What are you suggesting? I just didn't understand what you're suggesting. So, add a fee, add a fee to the permit?
No, no, the inspection, the in-ground pool permit, I'm just looking at electrical. Is electrical the only place it applies?
No, no, there's an in-ground pool permit from Building Department.
Yeah.
But that's for construction of the pool, right?
That's construction of the pool, and it's based on, again, a fee per $1,000 of construction cost. So, if it's a $40,000 pool.
Based on the construction cost, okay.
Collect $10 per thousand of that $40,000.
Yeah, I don't know if the Board of Health might do yearly inspection of pools, I'm not certain, but this is just the initial, you put the pool in.
Right.
Permit, not a, a annual.
Okay. That's probably a question for another conversation, but, you know, comes under the planning, planning umbrella of, you know.
Water conservation, yep.
Water conservation, and are we, are planning guidelines in alignment with our conservation needs?
Happy to look into that.
Okay. But at the very least, I wouldn't reduce them.
Yeah, that's a good point. I would agree.
Yes, one question. When was the last time Marshfield looked at their schedule? Because if they didn't look at it for 10 years, we could be chasing them.
I believe it's 2016.
Great. Thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
Anything for you guys? If not, we get a motion.
Got to find it.
I think, I, can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's good to note, just for the public, to know that we seem to be anywhere from 17 to 20% lower, right?
Correct.
In a lot of instances. So, we're raising it by, overall, by 10, you're saying.
Only because across the board, while each one may have a larger delta than 10, a lot of this doesn't account for a, a great deal of, you know, our total income.
Right.
It's mostly the new buildings that, you know, that build up, build up that account.
Okay.
And this only brings us up to the next comparable community, who's still, I think, within this context, is kind of at the lower end.
Yeah, okay.
Sean?
I just wouldn't want to think that what's driving this is we're looking at other towns. More so, we look at what our expenses are and where we need to fill the gaps. Not just because other towns charge more, we should be even with them, but where inspections might be costing us more than we're bringing in for the inspection, then let's try to make it more break even.
I think when we, again, going from the chart, the original charge from the Advisory Committee, just take a look at our fees, I think, you know, just in terms of where we sit within our communities, that's why we did that analysis. Since we have not revisited them since before the last.
Right.
Stock market crash and building boom, we thought it, you know, good to at least check in, but again, given the amount of volume that we expect to see, I think, if nothing else, I think just the, the amount of inspections we'll be doing, I think we're going to need, you know, additional resources.
But I, I agree with Sean. We talked about this with the ambulances. But one thing that I didn't have as much of a problem with this is most of it goes, most of the fees go to the builder. You know, it's not, we're not hitting the residents, you know, it's $10 here, $10 there.
Correct.
Most of it is going to go to new construction with the 10% more on the permit of a larger value of a house.
Yes.
Correct. And, you know, some of the reasoning behind this, as I said, informational and, and context is that, that item C that was on the memo that was distributed to you, we certainly have to visit that situation, and this will allow us some flexibility to do that.
Right. So, if we want to vote A, we can do that and then go to the next one. Does that make more sense?
Yeah.
Well, it seems like A supports C. You know, he's looking to be able to pay the inspectors a rate that's commensurate, right, with?
Actually, you don't have to do C. That's, falls under my responsibility, so don't move number C. But yes, if A and B don't take place, C doesn't take place.
Right, yeah. Because it's.
Actually, that falls under me. I approve those rate changes.
Okay.
Any other comments? Any comments from the audience?
When was it?
Just your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Christine Walsh, 64, Rebecca Road. Just curious when we, when we last, this was last approved the last time.
I believe it was 2005 for building and 2007 for electrical and plumbing.
Okay.
Okay, so, motion?
Move that the current town of Situate permit fee schedule be adjusted to match the permit fee schedule of the town of Marshfield as written today.
You might want to make an exception for the pool.
With the exception of the pool fee.
Stay the same.
Will remain unchanged.
Sixty.
The same.
That sounds good.
That's sixty, right?
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion?
Effective immediately or?
Yes.
You want it effective immediately?
Yeah, that way people don't come tomorrow and.
That's fine. We'll, we'll post these on the, on the town website, and we'll also have them in the office for people who come to the desk.
So, can you amend that to be effective immediately?
Yes.
Still second.
Effective immediately.
Good second.
Second by Mr. Harris. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All in opposed? None, so it's unanimous, five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
We doing B?
Yes.
Thought we did them all.
So, this is sort of associated with, with A, obviously, and it's, it's based on kind of common sense, if you will. We looked back into our records, and I consulted with Neil Duggan, who, of course, had been here 22 years before I got here, so between us, we've been here 27 years. Neil couldn't remember when the default cost of construction had been changed. What happens is, and it doesn't happen that often, frankly, but if a contractor comes in with a project basically for new construction, because it's so difficult to estimate renovations, but for new construction, you know, there's a cost that can be, that can be given for types of different constructions. If we feel in some cases that the contractor is understating the cost of the project, so that would therefore lead to an understated fee, because it's based on the cost of the project, we require the contractor to use a minimum of $100 per square foot for new construction. And that's been the department's standard, as Neil said, for time out of mind. I mean, it's at least 15 or 20 years before, you know, since, since anyone looked at that. As you all know, with any experience in the field, $100 per square foot doesn't buy you very much. It probably buys a very bare-bones garage with no heat. But anyway, it's not, it's not a number that really is justifiable, and we'd like to raise it to something still low, but more reasonable, and again, basing our permit fee on the number used to create a default project cost, if you will, is going to tend to raise those fees somewhat. So, our proposal is to raise the default project cost from $100 per square foot to $150 per square foot for basic heated construction, commit what we call conditioned space, heated or air-conditioned. That would be a reasonable cost in today's market. And beyond that, we've tended to use half of that for garage space and a third of that for things like porches, but that's a little bit of a per-case or a case-by-case computation. I think the, to simplify the vote, we should perhaps stick to simply conditioned space, meaning heated or air-conditioned, the basic house itself, and look at increasing how we calculate the cost of construction from $100 per square foot to 150, and, and allow that to be our default. As I said, that doesn't happen that often. Contractors typically come in with pretty good paperwork that we can review and determine what their actual cost for the construction project is going to be. So, it's only, I would say, 10% of the permit applications that come in that, that this even comes into play.
So, Bob, are you suggesting the 75 and the 25 also, or just the 150?
No, I would like, I would like to vote on all three of those numbers.
Okay. So, 150 per square foot is the minimum for conditioned space, 75 for garage space, and 25 for a porch or deck as the minimum?
I think it's supposed to be 50.
50 for what?
The porch. The backup house goes from 25 to 50.
I'm not sure whether this is.
So, the motion says 25.
I know, but I think the motion's mistaken.
I would, I would accept amending the motion to 25.
25 for a porch?
For a porch and a deck?
Yeah.
That's what's on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or amending.
It's just the backup had a proposed cost of 50.
Amending the backup to match the motion.
Okay.
Sorry, they weren't, they weren't both written at the same time.
Where do you get a $25 per foot deck?
I know, I want that builder to stop by.
What is a $150 per square foot house? I mean, as I said, these are all still pretty arbitrarily low.
Right.
We're not trying to gouge anyone. We're just, just trying to be reasonable.
And I think these are still.
More reasonable.
Probably more on par with our neighbors, but still in the low-range calculations.
Well, anyone that builds knows that these are very low numbers. Any comments? Questions? Motion?
Move that the basis for default computation of building permit fees based on construction cost be adjusted from the current $100 per square foot of construction to $150 per square foot of construction for conditioned space, $75 per square foot of garage space, and $25 per square foot of porch or deck.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Five to zero, unanimous, team's supporting. And we are going to pass on three, because that's the, the purview of the town administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for all the work.
Thank you.
My work.
Okay, moving right along. As I said a little while ago, we are postponing the Go Green discussion at 7:50, because he hasn't filled, he hasn't got all the work together that we need to look at to look at the project in full. So, we're going to the next item, 8 o'clock discussion for the room tax. Lynda Ferguson, owner of the Inn at Situate Harbor.
How are you?
Good.
So, I did not bring my reading glasses, so very sorry.
It's okay. I will just ask you to speak into the mic so everyone can hear you. Or move the mic, yeah.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We can.
We can.
I'm here to ask that the short-term rental tax not be implemented on July 1. The lack of transparency, input, and notice to those affected, coupled with the fact that the information presented at town meeting to ensure a yes vote was flat-out wrong, it should invalidate this article. I am co-owner and operator of the Inn at Situate Harbor, the only hotel in town, and was never informed that the town was singling out my business as well as vacation rentals for new tax. To my knowledge, there was never an agenda item listing the proposal of the short-term rooms tax, so that those of whom this tax was going to affect could be heard. There was never a discussion in the newspaper, social media, or elsewhere. I was out of the country and unable to attend town meeting, and found out about this new tax by reading an old Mariner. As a retired president, retired, I've got my person with me, anyway, President of the Chamber of Commerce, no one ever reached out to the Chamber about a business tax proposal. I say this because when the town was proposing to single out restaurants for a food tax of only 3/4 of a percent, the Chamber was notified, meetings were held, with all businesses affected, there was discussions at selectmen meetings, town meetings, and elsewhere about the effects. Everyone was given a chance to say their piece, and everyone knew about the implementation, so no business would be caught off guard. This article has no such vetting or discussion. When it was brought up at an advisory meeting, if the Inn had been notified, the answer by the finance director was negative. Why was that? An oversight, maybe, but why wasn't I notified after the meeting? Had notice gone out to the people bearing the brunt of this tax in February, I believe we would not be here today. The selection, the selectmen were not provided with all the information required to make a good decision, specifically the percentages being charged by the other towns. Perhaps another oversight. As stated at town meeting, currently, less than half the state has imposed this tax. Most importantly, the three towns that the Advisory Committee themselves quoted when supporting the article, and which are considered Situate's competitors for short-term rentals, Cohasset, Marshfield, and Hull are at 4%. Instituting a 6% tax in Situate will hurt the competitive nature of rentals in Situate. It is not, it is not neutral, as stated at the town meeting, which directly contradicts what the selectmen said at town meeting, making the vote based on false information. There's a couple of, well, many issues, but if the tax were to be effective July 1, my customers have a receipt that says how much they are being charged for their stay. Some have already paid in full. When they come, I'm going to have to tell them they owe more. But it's worse, because imagine you're a vacation homeowner, and you, the town's never told you that you needed to collect these taxes, but you're still responsible for them. You didn't collect them from the renters, so now it has to come out of your pocket. Another issue is that the town really has no idea how to track these home rentals. The site for the estate currently says under construction. It may be up by July 1. So, how is this going to be enforced? The fact is, is currently, as it is, the tax is directly aimed at the Inn. The Inn is, the Inn is the only one charging the tax, so how is the Inn supposed to be competitive? This will hurt the ability of rentals also to raise rates, to cover increase in costs of electricity, supplies, and et cetera, as this tax essentially is raising the rates of those rentals right now. I sit on several town groups that have been charged with economic development, keeping the Harvey resilient, bringing business to Situate, and so on. I can honestly say that taxing one of the largest businesses that brings people to Situate to the point that they are no longer competitive is not in the best interest of of the town. Worse, not even trying to tell them about the new tax smacks in the face of common decency. It also begs the question of why. The finance director did apologize for not reaching out to me, saying that if she had known, she would have reached out, but she did know in February, according to the advisory committee meeting minutes. And yet, still, no one reached out. I guess it was an oversight.
Lynda, I'm going to ask you one thing. I've let you go on. You're saying a lot of things that are like accusing us of doing something underhanded. So, if you can just take that tone out of it, nothing went on to get the Inn?
I'm not saying you did anything underhandedly.
I'm just hearing what's going on in the conversation.
Pointing out that you didn't get the information. I'll continue now. I asked about the notification of the people who do vacation rentals. I was told there is no way to know who they are because the state site hasn't provided the list. But the town can get that information out in the paper, townwide email, Facebook post. I just, it's taxing people without telling them. It's just not okay. This was a money grab, and there was no discussion on the impact, the rates, the implementation, or anything. The voters weren't fully informed correctly with the facts. I believe the article would not have even gone to advisory as it was had the facts been presented correctly to the selectmen. The Inn has worked very hard to not just be a business located in a town, but a business that is part of the town. We've donated tens of thousands of dollars in room nights and cash to all kinds of local groups and causes. We've held New Rich Towns events for free. We've accommodated various town departments when they have asked us to use our facilities for training. We've put people up whose homes were washed away. We lowered our rates for evacuees. You know, and I could go on and on about donations to sands and animal shelter and everything else, but what I'm hoping is that you'll find a way to make this right for the Inn and the other homeowners who bring so many people to Situate to support the economy and the rest of the businesses in town. Mistakes have been made, and now it's the time to do the right thing. If this article is found to be valid, I'm asking that you put off the implementation until January 1. Revisit the amount of the tax with information about the surrounding town's tax rates and its effects, and be able to give reasonable notice to those who are affected that are going to be, so they won't be unfairly burdened.
So, I'll open up to you guys. I just want to say a couple of quick things. Number one, I love the Inn. The Inn's great. You've put kids, people up there that I've come to you and said, "Look, these people don't have a house to stay in." It's, you know, "I have all my guests stay there." It's an unbelievable part of the community. And you really put it there when you didn't have to, you know? But there was nothing intentional against the Inn in passing this article, this motion. Was it a money grab? Yeah, a little bit. You know, there was an opportunity there for the town to make some more money, and that's why we went forward with it, as many of the other communities there. But I guarantee you, Lynda, there was nothing done aimed at the Inn or making anything, you know, bad for the Inn. There's some stuff that we've talked about since that part that we hadn't thought of, I'll give you that. You know, the scenarios where people were being charged where they didn't know beforehand. I had never thought of that until Karen brought it up, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And there's, those are types of things that I wish we had thought about beforehand, but there was nothing, there was no attacking here. And I know we discussed it at, one second, I know we discussed it at this meeting, because I remember teasing Sean, because we all went on Airbnb, and we looked at it to see what places are available, how many places in Situate are there.
That was at that selectmen meeting, but it was not on the agenda. It was on the agenda as articles for the meeting. It didn't list rooms taxes. So, how would I know what articles are going to be on there?
Well, if you were here, you knew that's what we were talking about. We weren't looking up things on Airbnb.
I wasn't here. I looked back at the selectmen meeting to see how this whole discussion went. And quite frankly, it was pretty apparent that nobody really had a firm grasp on what was happening. And I'm not saying you purposely put this tax in to hurt the Inn, but had anybody, had it been posted on the agenda, which I've been getting every other week now for I don't know how many years, I would have seen it and I would have come. And I could have told you, all the information Karen told you, I told Karen. And I could have told you then that implementing this July 1 is going to kill my hotel, and it's going to kill the vacation rentals in town. Most of these have been rented for six months minimum, maybe even longer. These people have receipts. You know, somebody rents their house for $3,000 for the week, they now have to pay the state and the local tax. That's another $345. How would you feel if you showed up to your rental, you saved all your money, you've got this, and now you're told, "Well, it's another $345." Well, sorry, kids, there goes, our dinner's out. You know, like, this is bad timing. Not to mention the fact that, you know, the 6% makes, takes all of us out of the playing game for being competitive with Marshfield, Cohasset, and Hull. I don't compete with Rockland. Neither do the vacation rentals. I mean, this is something that you guys should have known, that should have been given to you, and it wasn't. And I'm not saying you should have known because you should know everything. You know, I know better than anybody. I'm friends with all of you. You're not paid, you're essentially a volunteer, and it sucks the life out of you. I get that. But the information should have been given to you that was correct, so you could have based your decision on it.
Yeah, I don't know what was given as incorrect, but you certainly knew that the state of Massachusetts had an occupancy tax that they were passing.
Yes, the hotel has been paying 5%, 5.7% for years. I get that. I had no idea.
And you knew that it came under the municipality so that they could do it. Because when did it happen?
Hold on. What the state did in January was allow you to charge for Airbnbs the same as hotels were being charged. So, it allows, so the state is now charging their 5.7 on Airbnbs. And it also said to you that, yes, you could charge an occupancy tax, but you never said to me or anybody else in town that you were charging this occupancy tax.
But you knew that it was out there.
I've known it's been out here for years.
You didn't look at anybody that had an Airbnb and tell them either.
I've known it's been out there for years. This tax has been around for years. But that doesn't mean that it's okay.
So, I'm going to open up to the board, and they can give their points, and we'll go from there. Who would like to start?
I started. Do you want me to start?
Go ahead.
You can start.
So, I asked to bring this issue up because, and I have had conversations with Ms. Ferguson. The original motion, article, the concept of charging a fee that we're entitled to under general law was well-discussed, well-vetted. Huge mistake not to review it with you, but the concept itself, I don't think any of us had any problem with, or the advisory board or all of that. The 2% variation between would have been useful to really appreciate who you compete with, but that 2% spread is, you know, I mean, it's a couple of, that's, it's not a material amount of money, just from a, it could be if they're there 10 days, but in any case.
You're renting your house for $3,000 or $9,000, as some places are. It's a huge amount of money. And quite frankly, it is a huge amount of money because people look at the bottom line. When you go online to book rooms in the Situate area, it's going to bring up these rentals and whatever, and they look at the bottom line, and if this one's $20 more, or $50 more, or whatever, they're going to go with this one for the same product. So, I mean, that's like saying, well, you know, you're talking about all these other things. Well, let's just charge this much money. Who cares? It's just a little bit more. It isn't.
Okay.
It isn't. And advisory committee specifically said Marshfield, Hull, and Cohasset when they were supporting this tax. It's not fair to these Airbnbs, or to me, to unknowingly, like you did, institute a tax that's more, and then just say, "Well, it's not that big."
Nothing was done unknowingly. You just got to take that little...
She just said that she didn't know that it was 4% in these three towns.
Well, that, yeah, but it was out there.
That's unknowingly.
It was known. It was talked about at town meeting, it was talked about at selectmen's meeting. Maybe you didn't know that the percentage was 4% then. I don't recall the conversation.
No, and to Ms. Ferguson's point, I mean, I stood up and supported this, and I am supportive of this tax. How we got there is, and the implementation, I think there were unintended consequences that we're learning about, and I think are important for us to have a conversation about. We may not be able to fix it in the two months before, or the month and a half, what is it?
It's not even a month and a half.
Yes, three weeks.
I'm still sitting here telling you that...
Let us just...
Yeah. Yeah, I lost my turn of thought there. I stood up and before the town and said that it would have, it would be neutral impact to competitors, because that was my understanding. And if I was wrong in that, then I apologize to the community because that was, I think, all of our intent. We never wanted to do anything that would harm our, you know, business community. And in all of our conversations, that was always, that was something that was important. So, I think that there were unintended consequences to this, that at the very least, it's important that this business owner has an opportunity to bring before us, and we have an obligation as a board to figure out ways that we can either address some of this if we can, and more importantly, make sure that we have safeguards in place that we don't find, that we can vet it better when it affects our local businesses.
Well, I agree. I went back and watched the 219 meeting, which I was chairing, and to me, the conversation just really surrounded Airbnbs. So, it, I really interpreted it as not having an impact on the Inn. So, I apologize, Lynda, for that. And I think you're absolutely right, that we should have done a little bit more due diligence to educate folks before presenting it. I mean, I think Lynda's concerns are absolutely warranted and valid. I guess what I would want to ask is where can we go from here? You know, we can sit here all night and talk about what happened, but is there any recourse that the board can consider to, like you said, she's not opposed to paying a tax, it's appropriately planning for it, it's notifying people. Is there any way, I mean, it's effective in the article and in the motion July 1, but do we have any leeway?
Well, let's see if we even want to do that.
Right, I know, but that's my, I'm asking Jim or Nancy if it's even possible, right? Before we even discuss it, is it even possible?
I don't know of a way that a board of selectmen can overturn a vote at town meeting.
But it wouldn't be overturning it. It would be just putting off the implementation.
The town meeting voted for July 1 implementation.
I said July 1, though.
I don't think the board of selectmen, and I'll get an answer from council, but I don't think the board of selectmen can override that.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to know from council if the vote at town meeting was based on a statement that said this will not hurt the competitive nature of rentals in Situate, and that it's neutral, doesn't, I don't see how that wouldn't invalidate the vote. It was based on wrong information.
Wouldn't invalidate the vote? Not in my opinion, but we can ask, but how they can invalidate the vote?
Well, the difference is, the article was straightforward. We're going to change the rate, we're going to charge this, it's going to be, and that's the date.
I mean, I've been in that town meeting for years, and quite frankly, and this probably I'll get screamed at, but if the selectmen support something, and advisory supports something, I generally support it. I think you guys do your due diligence. I think you guys know what you're talking about, and I support it. So, if you stand up there and say, "This doesn't affect the competitiveness of Situate," I'm going to believe you and support that. I know people in that audience who, if you had stood up and said, "Well, this is going to hurt the competitiveness of the rentals in Situate," they wouldn't have voted for this.
Nor would we have brought it forward.
That's exactly my point. Nor would you have even gotten it that far. If it had been 4% and somebody had contacted me in February so I could tell you guys, "You're going to screw the rentals in this town because you're going to have people screaming at them from check-in to checkout," you might have put it off, and I wouldn't be here. I just wouldn't be here.
I did check with, I'm sorry, with Department of Revenue, and I would defer to the town administrator because he knows this stuff better than I, but according to the, I wanted to see what the application was. The town, towns can change the vote, but you have to go back to a vote, and you can only do it once every 12 months. So, in theory, if we wanted to revisit this, it wouldn't be until November, which isn't going to help you in January, to actually look at the article itself. I don't know if we have any authority to appeal to the Department of Revenue.
Let's, we're putting our horses...
Yeah, sorry.
So, Karen, do you have any?
Yeah, my question would be, is there a definition of what implementation means? So, in other words, this goes into effect on July 1? Does it mean that it applies to any reservation that is made that is as of that date? Or could we make it so that anything, reservation that was made prior to July 1 is not being charged this tax?
According to the Department of Revenue, is anything that happens, any stay after July 1?
No, that's not exactly true. Any reservation made for a stay after July, the reservation was made prior to January 1?
January or July?
January 1.
Of this past year.
If it was made prior to January 1, for a stay after July up until a certain point, you don't have to charge the tax. That's nearly, it would cost me more than I'm going to give you in taxes to figure that all out when I charge that person. So, there are reservations that may not have to pay this tax in July 1, but shortly thereafter it is.
Almost all of them won't, but when they make their reservation, but yeah.
So, but shortly thereafter there is. So, I mean, my concern really is just, you know, telling people when they check in and vacation rentals, "So sorry, I know, I know I told you, you only had to pay me this, but now you're going to pay me that." I mean, I get yelled after if it's rounded wrong between booking.com and my reservation. So, I'm just not looking forward to this summer at all.
So, Lynda, what if we had made it 4? You still have to tell all the people at 101.
But I would have known, but my point was, if you had made it 4, and somebody had told me back in February, told anybody, if this was on an agenda, if this was in the newspaper, if this was anywhere, we would have had six months to tell these people.
So, I'll give you that. I don't, I don't know, because I didn't do all the research. I don't know that it wasn't in the paper. I mean, we certainly talked about it.
I looked at it, and I asked for it.
So, I mean, could we have done a better job communicating it to the community? Definitely. You know, and we should have gone to the Chamber, and we should have, I mean, there's not a heck of a lot of Inns in town, you know?
Nope.
You know, so it was, it was more, I think somebody mentioned Airbnb kind of related. I think we all knew that it impacted the Inn, but we didn't, didn't think of it as much. So, you know, there's a bunch of communities that are doing this. Almost every community that has done it has done it at the max that they've been allowed to at the time that they've done it.
That's not true. Cohasset enacted it in 2016 at 4%, probably because Hull and Marshfield are 4.
You've got to let me finish talking, and then you can interrupt.
Okay, but if you're going to be wrong, I want to stop it.
I don't believe I'm wrong. And I said most, so you may be able to pull out one example that wasn't. But most of the communities put it at 4% because the 4% was the max that you could do back then. And now, most communities that do it now, and Nancy has the statistics, do it at 6% because 6% is the max that you can do it at. In fact, I think it's less than two or three that don't, haven't done it at the max whenever they've had the opportunity to do it. So, I mean, just disclosure of what's going on here. You know, we did it at the max because everybody does it at the max.
Well, except for our biggest competitor, and I'll say that again. Our biggest competitor, Cohasset, in January, July of 2016, did 4. And it's likely because they looked at who their competitors were and said, "Oh, Hull and Marshfield are only doing 4, I better do 4."
Right. And you've had an advantage for quite a number of years where other people had to pay tax, and you didn't have to. And I understand that you don't like the fact that it's flipped, and I get it, and I wish, if you had come here and had this conversation, maybe it would have compelled the board not to do it. Maybe. I don't know. So, you know, if we want to try and get creative and talk to town council and see what our options are, we can see if the majority of the board wants to do that. I think at this point in time, unfortunately, this should have sailed because town meeting passed it. And I don't think there's anything that we could do. I think, in my opinion, if there was some way that we could postpone it, I would, because I get the fact that people weren't expecting to pay this, and they are, and as of some date, they should expect to pay it. And that's when I would like, I would like personally for that to be the day that it started. So, if there's any way that we can do that, I would be in favor of doing that. But I don't know that there is. I don't, does that, any, does everyone? I think that's a sense of the board.
I would like to explore that.
That's right. So, how are we trying?
I'm typing it right now.
Okay. So, Jim will talk to town council and see if there's any way to do that, and if there is, then we will, we'll try and institute that because the board feels that that's the right thing to do. And if we want to revisit whether the tax should be 4 or 6% in the future, we can do that as well. But that's going to take a town meeting vote to change it.
Which is fine. I mean, that's all I came here to do, is just ask you to put that off. And I do feel that because it was based on erroneous information, there should be a way to put this implementation off. I really do. And I, I hope that, I just hope that if anything like this comes up again, that somebody does make the effort to reach out to whatever businesses this might affect, just like they did with the meals tax several years ago.
Yeah, and again, it was not intentional, and we did not call, we did not call Airbnb and say, "Hey, guys."
But you didn't have to do that. You just had to make, reach out to the chamber. We would have gotten the word out, you know? And, and people did know.
That's on me. Not on Nancy, it's on the board. That's on me.
People knew that I didn't know.
I didn't do it.
And they asked about it. Advisory committee thought that I should have known. I mean, you know, so.
I think we all think. Yeah.
One que, one question. What are the consequences of us not implementing?
We do, we don't have the option.
The revenue doesn't.
We don't have the option.
She pays the state and the state pays us.
Oh, I've got it. Got it.
We don't collect it, the state collects it, remands it back to us.
Well, because it occurred to me if we could suspend the fines on the sign by law.
That's the board.
I was just hoping for some, some.
What about a possible abatement? Because clearly I'm going to be the only one you're going to be collecting off of because nobody's going to be able to register with the state if they even do.
Yeah, I didn't want to say that, but that's not up to your board, that's up to a different board.
What board is that?
Board of assessors.
Board of assessors. Where are they? Let's, I would.
What she's suggesting is that she has to come up with, say, $10,000 in room tax that her real estate taxes be abated to the same amount so that the net impact on here is zero.
And then it could start for everybody.
But that's not within your.
Let's see what council says first.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I got it.
And I do totally appreciate all your hard work. You guys all know that.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay.
So I said it.
It is 8:30, and now we have a presentation from the Widows Walk Golf Committee. Mark Joyce, Mark Bissell, Monty, who's, is everybody coming up?
I think everyone's here. This is enthusiastic board.
Right in the middle.
Was John the liaison? Who's the liaison?
No.
You two.
I don't want to get 1.5.
So I'll just kind of tee this up a little bit and then turn it over to you guys. So this golf committee was put together six months ago, give or take. Moore and I are the liaisons for it. We've both been to meetings. I think we both feel that the, the committee is very active. They're looking at it from all angles. They're very energetic, and I think they're doing a great job. The whole, the whole reason why this committee can be more effective now is that in 2017, the bond that the town had borrowed to pay for the land of the golf course got paid off. So the, the enterprise fund carried about a $300,000 debt at that point in time every year. So now with that bond going away, with, the thought was that there'd be money around to invest back into the golf course to do all the things that they've wanted to do for years. And we put this group of people together who are active members at the course, know it very well. Did I see Bob? There's Bob in the back. Bob's involved in it, the pro, he's been the pro there for 20-something years. So this is a very knowledgeable group that's here trying to do what they think they can do to improve the golf course, which has had some challenges over the years with weather-related stuff and just the golf industry in general in terms of being a very profitable operation. So, there's anything there?
Nope.
All right, so with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to you guys to do your presentation, and then at the end, we will ask your questions.
We know more about the golf course than we do this laptop, so maybe let's kick us off while Mark's getting that set up. My name is Mark Bissell. This is Mark Joyce. We are members of the Widows Walk Golf Committee and happy to be here tonight. First of all, I want to say thank you for letting us serve the committee. We got funded, founded in January. We've been meeting bi-weekly since then, so it's about 10 or 11 meetings that we've been through. A bit more work than some of us thought it would be, but I think it's been a good experience so far. Something we've enjoyed doing and appreciate your letting us serve this compound. So we want to do, well, it's dark.
You can put light off.
Okay. What we're going to do first is, Mark's going to walk you through a handful of pictures, kind of visuals of where we're at today with Widows Walk. I'm then going to walk through what the committee's been up to, some of the activities we've been doing, as well as do a quick timeline going back 23 years, talk a bit about today, a bit about the future. And don't worry, that won't take more than 10 or 15 minutes. It won't take 3, 24 years. But then finally going to bring it all together with a request for your support in some ideas that we have, as well as your feedback on how we've done in our first five months. Clearly, we serve your pleasure. We appreciate the opportunity to do that so far. All right, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mark Joyce.
All right, so a little bit of technical difficulty there. Apologize, we came early to get it set up. So here we go. So just kind of a little overview of Widows Walk, if you will. So it's a municipally-owned 18-hole layout adjacent to the historic North River, north and south. You've got the Herring River there as well overlooking the Spit in the Atlantic Ocean. It's America's first environmentally demonstrated course designated in 1997 by the Audubon International. So it's a certified cooperative sanctuary, so I don't think a lot of people realize that that is pretty cool. So a little bit about the facility, so, and a little bit of background about golf in this area. So there were nearly 13% increase in rounds played at public courses in our region, more than double the increased experience in the rest of the country. And this is real data coming from the National Golf Foundation. I might know Kevin Callahan was instrumental in doing a lot of the research here that you're seeing here. Widows Walk will be aggressively promoted in the Boston Business Journal this coming fall season with issues and articles. It's frankly one of the most challenging but fair municipal courses in Massachusetts, and as it stands now, it's ranked fourth in the state. The Core Avenue Golf will invest $2,800 this upcoming season to play golf. 50% of the Core Avenue golfer is white collar, so we've actually got a great mix of blue and white collar, right? So good representation of our town as well, I feel personally. 70%, 75% of the Avenue golfers surf the web. 60% use their cell phones and media, right? So we'll speak a little bit about what we want to do from a social media platform to increase the visibility and the usage of the walk. The average golfer will spend 70 rounds per season. I know that says 58, but actually found out the data is 70 rounds per season. So there's a lot of revenue to be had out there, right? Lot more golf going on here is the message than in the rest of the country, especially concentrated in this region. You'd be surprised, or maybe you're not, that 60% of the top 10 courses on the South Shore, the Cape and the Islands, the level of golfing interest is extremely high in the South Shore region. Over 5.7 million people will visit South Shore, Cape Cod, and the Island in the months of June, July, and August. These folks will just drive right by Situate because we feel personally the way we present our golf course right now. So we're basically doing a call to action here. So in the 22-year history of the facility, there's really been no tangible infrastructure improvements leading to significant decline of the facility, and I'll share some of the pictures of that. I know that this is our first year together as a committee, but I do know folks like Monty and Bob have been advocating for improvements at the walk for well over five years now. So it's not like this is a new initiative, but we do credit you for giving us the opportunity to put a presentation to you, gather that we feel is effective, and hopefully you'll feel the same way in the town as well. Okay, so the facility is also non-compliant from American Disabilities Act, so that's something that we all care about and we want to improve. Everybody should have the right to use that facility because it's more than just a golf course. It's used for a lot of other reasons, as we know, walkers in the off-season, dog walkers, there's fishing, family fishing going on there, there's sledding. There's just a lot of activity, that cross-country scheme, that we feel we can leverage and get more revenue and generate more revenue as a result of that. Again, it's located along the Driftway, which is a key entry into our harbor, our town, our main asset. And I think you really want to pay attention to some of the pictures we show because this is what people are seeing as they're coming down the Driftway. The, the walk has proven to be a valuable asset to the town. It's been here for 22 years. The $7.8 million bar was successfully paid off at the tune of 382K per year. And just as a side note, we feel the success of this town asset should not just be driven by revenue and revenue numbers. So I'll mention it now, and it'll be mentioned a few times. I think it's important for people to understand, it was frankly news to me, being somewhat new to the town since 2004, that this is an enterprise, so there are no tax dollars involved here. This really has been a self-sustaining facility, as we know. Keep in mind, again, keep in mind that the facility is used year-round for a lot of different activities outside of just golf. The proposal we are sharing allows the town to raise the facility to the standards expected by our clientele and comparable frankly to other surrounding facilities on the North Shore. I'm sorry, South Shore. North Shore, where did that come from?
I don't like that.
Anyhow, so if you're driving down the Driftway, this is essentially what you're looking at, right? And I would challenge, where else in town does it look like this, right? And it's not a pretty picture, but I think picture speaks a thousand words, and this is just a little idea of what that looks like. As we dig a little deeper into the parking lot, you can see that this is more than just an eyesore. This is actually, from our perspective, a liability issue as well for people coming and going from the facility. Here we're getting into, you know, and this is actually one of the better pictures that you'll look at, and still, that's not a very attractive picture. That's not a true reflection of the town we live in. Here you can get a little bit of look of the infrastructure, what the clubhouse is beginning to look like, and as you can see, it's literally falling apart, right? So I can't even tell you what's living in there, but I did see something poke its head out of that.
Was that you, Monty?
Yeah. So, and this is just to talk a little bit about the facility itself. So on the sixth hole, as you're making the turnaround, if you're in a cart, there's actually a 30-foot drop where there used to be a fence and some guardrails there to prevent that from happening. Although this picture doesn't do it justice where you can see the cracks in the cart path, that actually goes down about three feet. So a cart could literally tip over and tumble down there, and obviously, that's not going to be a pleasant experience for anybody. So this is the sixth hole. There's also, instead of staircases that used to lead up to the tee box, they're totally gone now because, after 22 years, you know, wood rots even if it's treated, and they're simply gone now. Here's another example of the 11th hole. As you're coming down the 11th hole, there's about a 60-foot drop on the left or right, on the left obviously when you're coming down. Now, I witnessed once in the golf league, an older gentleman was in a cart. So he started driving down the cart path, and he inadvertently put his foot on the gas instead of the brake. And if he didn't hit a tree up there, he would have plummeted down there. We literally had to go because he was, you know, he was having a moment where he had to lift his leg off of the gas pedal and say, "No, the brake's here." But that kind of really opened my eyes to, you know, there's, there's certain danger here, and, you know, it's just a moment where a lapse in judgment almost caused him to plummet literally down, a 60-foot drop. Here you can see the ninth hole as well. So for those that know the walk, if you're coming down the ninth hole, there's a hard left-to-right turn. If you're not paying attention to what you're doing, and let's face it, there are a lot of people out there, there's, they're cabressing, they're on their phones. That literally is a seven-foot drop down there. At one point, there used to be rails and fencing, and there was an opportunity to protect that from happening, but over 22 years, it's just literally deteriorated and is gone. Here's our vision, right? So that's a lot of negative, but it is the reality of it. But here's our vision of what the clubhouse could be, right? So these aren't the actual real diagrams. My understanding is the RFP has gone out now?
Yes.
Thank you, Jim. And so we vision that we'll have a nice deck where people can have events, or you can go there and have a meal with your family, or, or you can, you know, celebrate a birthday or some occasion there, and you're going to be overlooking the rivers, the spit, and the ocean, right? So again, these are just pictures to show you what it could be. In terms of coming down the Driftway, this is our vision. So we would see ornamental grasses, you know, maybe some hydrangeas, things that, you know, that are indigenous to this area that could grow. I'm thinking that maybe we could reach out to people like Kennedy's Garden, maybe every blooming thing, and see if there wants to be some spark partnership there so that they can actually participate and provide in the upkeep there and offset some of the costs as related to just improving the overall frontage, right? And I know, Anthony, you talked about you'd like to just run that all the way down the Driftway, and, and I get your point there because I think it's, again, a key gate into our downtown, and we want to put our best foot forward there. Here we're looking into some of the things that we had talked about that potentially could be grown there and put in there to really step up the frontage there. So these are just ideas I have. We're open to any ideas, but I think there's a lot of, just from doing personal gardening, I think there are a lot of great things we can do there that are little to no maintenance. We just have to step up and do it. So our vision of creating a Widows Walk social platform, we had talked about a little earlier, right? So we would work with the IT department to enhance our social media platform. Our current website needs to be upgraded to the current standards today, and certainly automated tee time linkage there to a reservation system would help us. Maybe we can link into Golf Now and get more competitive because all of our competitors, and they are our competitors, they're all out there and they have, they have all of this, so they've got a big jump on us, right? So we can certainly develop a Widows Walk application as well, right? And, and that will be something that, you know, young people love to call up on their phone. They'll be able to see what's going on there. They'll see the inter-club activities that folks like Jim have stepped up and put together so that we can really promote that, and that in itself is going to drive revenues. Everything we're doing is with the full intent of driving revenue as well. We promote Widows Walk on the obvious platforms, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube, et cetera. And then what I think we can do is create linkage here into other businesses within the town to grow revenue at the walk and the local businesses, right? So limited, not limited to, but restaurants, bars, retail stores, boat charters. There's a lot of things that we can do from a synergy perspective that I think can not just promote the golf course, but promote the town as well. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mark, and he's going to get into some of the detailed plans that we have for growing revenue, which we've already started to do here despite some of the weather challenges. And I know that, you know, we've met a lot with Nancy, and she's been very gracious with us. But I would just ask people to keep in mind that we shouldn't just look at this as, you know, a revenue facility. We should look at it as a town asset, and we should approach it. There are going to be good years and bad years. Obviously, we've been affected by droughts. We've had 50 days of rain this spring already, so I'm amazed at how good the financials are tracking right now. But just, I think, keep in mind that once in a while, we may need to support the facility. And certainly, two years ago, we had an extreme drought there, and that definitely affected our revenue. But when you look at the overall life of the facility itself, to pay off that 382 per year over 20 years shows that if we get the town asset up to where it should be, that it's quite capable of returning the investment that we put into it. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Great. Thanks, Mark. There's no more colored pictures. We're going to turn the lights back on so we can have a conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll wait that guy. Thanks, Mark. So I mentioned some of this in the overview, but I think it's, as I mentioned, it's been a busy five months for us. There's a handful of things I just wanted to call out in terms of the committee activities that are some in our charter or something a little bit beyond the charter. As Mark mentioned, we kind of early on decided to really take a hard look at revenue. We think that's fundamental to everything we're looking at here, so spent time looking at that. And obviously, with revenue comes cost. So one of the first things we looked at, the town outsources to IGN for maintenance. It's large, one of the largest firms in the, in the country that does it. And the committee felt that there were some areas where they weren't honoring the full extent of the contract and weren't keeping the course up the way they should be. So we documented about 20 areas that we felt could be improved. Bob worked with IGN management to address that, and we're very happy that there's been some very positive improvement already. So we're seeing that just in the first, you know, few weeks of the season. Had conversations with Jim and Bob and said, "If need be, they'll go back more formally and work with IGN to make sure we're getting what we're paying for." But right now, we feel confident that we're starting to see that turnaround and no reason to think we have to go any further, but it's great to know we've got the support to be able to do that. So we really kind of see ourselves as a committee, kind of the eyes and ears on the ground out there every week, can raise these things, can make sure that we're accountable to, our vendors are accountable to the town for what we're paying for. Another thing was, as we were talking about it, it seemed like although there's a sense of community at Widows, it's, it's not really that well-defined. And we thought this notion of membership might be something that could help out, and this idea that it's, we could create an inter-club.[1618.47] this idea that it's, we could create an inter-club. The town has never had tournaments at Widows Walk, well, the one club tournament a year. But if you're a member to a club, you typically get an opportunity to play a member-member, a member-guess, or four or five times a year, there'll be something organized where you come in and do that. And we thought that could be a really appealing thing, but we want to make sure that we stay affordable golf in the South Shorts, one of the mandates of the course forever. So the way we've done that is to create this notion called the inter-club. And the only thing you've got to do in order to join that is buy a pass worth at least $750 a year. So that's just a punch card. It's discounted, so you could just count on the rounds that you play, but it's a commitment to Widows Walk as, you know, your club, as a member there. And we had our first tournament about three or four weeks ago. We had six teams show up, you know, 18 people playing, so it was a really good success. We're looking forward to one in July. We actually moved that a little bit later in the season so we can get some more momentum around that and hopefully get some more punch cards sold. And if any of you are golfers or have friends that are golfers who haven't bought a card yet, we encourage you to do that by June 30th, right before June 30th.
Yeah.
So it'll hit this fiscal year.
June 30th.
Before June 30th. Then we're, and that's kind of the message we're giving to folks and it's resonating. We're seeing some improvements in sales of punch cards. We'll get into a little bit of some of the early returns on it, but we're seeing, you know, double-digit percentages improvement in some of the revenue lines this year by getting some of the activity going out there. So we're excited about that. On the marketing side, it's also been helping. Kevin's done some great work. One of his first comments was, "We've got 13,000 people in the database who have golfed at Widows Walk at least once. Are we talking to them? How can we talk to them?" So we got started with a weekly newsletter. We've got over 13,000 people on that. Our cancellation rate, our unsubscribe rate is very low and our open rate is very high. We're seeing over 30% of people open the email, which is huge. If you're in email marketing, that's a huge, huge return. So with a little bit of effort, a little bit of focus, we're starting to see those kind of returns. And as Mark mentioned, we think there's ways to improve that and formalize that. Maybe at some point, we look at a marketing budget of more than $2,000 a year for Widows. In the meantime, we're going to help fill that gap as a committee to get this word out there and to get momentum on some of this, you know, forward motion. We're seeing it already, which has been great. We met with the town administrator, director of finance, so that we could all better understand the mechanics of Widows. I work in operations for a software company and my team's sick of hearing it when I say, "It's really easy to spend money. It's harder to earn it." So when you put a proposal together, I think it's important, you can cover both sides of that. So what would you want to spend it on? How would you earn it? How would you cover that? So we thought it was prudent to understand better how those mechanics worked, how the finance worked, look through the budget in detail with them to better understand that. So thank you both for your time and helping us cut the curve on that. So then that result of those five months, then, I think we've seen an opportunity to improve Widows, increase the value of the asset for the town. We can, we believe we've got ways we can increase revenue. We're already seeing it start to take motion. And reiterating the point, this will be fully funded by golfing operations, not by tax dollars. So we've certainly got a lot of things to spend money on right now. We're doing that as a town, making some good investments. I think here's an opportunity to make an investment, again, funded by golfing operations as opposed to going back to the taxpayer. So with that, I promised you a quick historical tour. We're going to roll back 23 years and roll forward back to today and actually go forward into the future a little bit. So going back 23 years ago, 1997, gas was a dollar nineteen a gallon, minimum wage $5.15. The Titanic movie just came out. Remember back then?
Timely.
Yes. Cell phones had just gotten smaller to carry around. They weren't in a big bag anymore, but the antennas were still long. You couldn't stick them in your pocket. Median sale price of homes in Situate, $245,900. That's the number I got from a friend at Coldwell Banker, so it's the sale price, not the tax price. And Widows opened at a cost of $6.5 million. That's also the time we started paying the debt service of $382 annualized basis from there. So we jumped forward 23 years and gas is now pushing $3 a gallon, 300% increase. Minimum wage, $12 bucks an hour, more than double. Home price, and then the kids at new middle school have iPhones or smaller in their pocket, like mini computers in their pocket. Median home price or sale price is $771.5, so 300% increase in the median sale price of homes in Situate in that timeframe. Widows Walk debt is paid off not through taxes, but through golfing operations. And what Widows hasn't changed. It's very, very, we saw some pictures a minute ago. It's showing its age in some areas. It's got a great opportunity and we can, we think we can grab that. So this slide's not new. Apologize for the stumble there. This was breaking news as of this week. It's early numbers, probably needs a little bit more vetting as we go forward, but whereas I mentioned, we're definitely seeing January to May, same period, 24% increase in revenues. Greens fees are up 23% despite the rain. Again, it's important to think about what could be doing it. We can't say it's all causal at this point, but we think it's partly due to the committee, partly due to the inter-club, partly due to the marketing, partly due to the fact that many other courses were rained out early and that some of them were closed longer than normal because of the weather. Bob's been doing a great job. I think we've built a reputation as being a tough but good course, and people are coming back to that. So we're excited about that and some of the early returns here in terms of being able to move forward. So then, moving forward today, that's the first part of today, is that revenue is starting to tick up. And then, we really wanted to come, come to you today with an idea of what we can see in the short term. In the short term, we think now is the time to do something for Widows. There are a number of folks in town who don't want to pay $25,000 a year or more to join a private club, either because they don't golf enough, or they don't have the money, or they just don't want to, or they're willing to do it. And we think that Widows could become their club of choice. They are going to golf. We just talked about how much volume there is in the area. We want to get more of those folks golfing here in Situate, either local residents or nearby residents, to draw them in. And we know that we can do that if we improve it. What we just saw, you have to be really strong stomach to drive in today. If you don't know the course, you probably wouldn't just drive in to check it out. It's reputational, it's carrying it right now. We can improve that. Mark mentioned in some of the literature, looking back, doing some research, Widows was talked about as the gateway to the harbor years ago when it was being proposed and when it was being built. And it is the gateway to the harbor, just not a very impressive one, right? But that is the first impression. If you come off a 3A, you're going to go by the dump, you're going to go by Widows Walk. And there's not enough of a difference between the two right now.
Yeah, the dump is actually a little more classy.
So again, this has been self-sufficient for 23 years. It needs to be self-sufficient based on the DRO guidelines, and the opportunity, as Tony mentioned, we opened the meeting, is now because we paid off the previous debt service. So there's really three prongs of this, calling it the triple play in the near term. One is the frontage. Just make it some curb appeal on the front side, clean up the entrance, move to a single entrance as opposed to multiple. We can make a lot, a big improvement that way. Secondly, is the parking lot. We looked at that. Plenty of places to, you know, trip and fall, twist your ankle, or just have that aesthetic that's just not appealing. So we want to get that cleaned up so it has that curb appeal look to it. And then the clubhouse. We think we can greatly improve the flow, make it more accessible, get compliant with ADA, and just some basic things around comfort. You know, if you, if you play golf and you come into the turn, you come to the ninth hole before the 10th, and you want to use the restroom, you've got to walk in, go all the way across the restaurant to get there. And we put the restrooms right in the corner where the best view would be if they weren't there, right? The marsh is right there. The spit is right there. You're sitting there. Thanks, Monty.
Roll the view.
So we think that by opening that up and getting, letting some windows out there and wrapping the deck around there, Monty's on our committee. Did you meet Monty?
It's got to be a resort experience, right? Because that's what people expect nowadays.
Yeah. And I think increasing the seating, upgrading the facilities, there's a lot of opportunity to do there, but we don't see this becoming a big wedding facility. We don't see it becoming a 300-person place. Part of that is there's some constraints on size of the parking lot. If we have a tournament, we still want to be able to have the tournament and have golf in the afternoon, so there's some considerations we're taking in there. So this doesn't need to be a knock-down and rebuild, we don't believe, which is good because that would be tens of millions of dollars. But we think it's adequate in terms of the footprint to be able to renovate it, expand it briefly on the current footing and be able to do, therefore, do that cost-effectively and still give that better experience, the improved experience that we'd like to see for the town. So if I take you from that short term, then into the future, we think that right now, if you're bringing folks into town, relatives into town, you're not driving by Widows Walk and saying, "Look at our golf course." More often than not, you're not doing that. We think it could be that. We saw some of the things here. We've done a little bit of work. Susan's done a great job with some of the local vendors just mocking up what could be. And it's really neat to think about doing it in a low-maintenance way as well, something in keeping with the character of the town is important to us as well. So that will increase the number of meals that are served, number of rounds that are played, amount of pride in the town, and get us to that compliance and safety concerns that we had as well. So how does this get paid for, then? So I think it's easy, again, to spend money, not as easy to earn it, so what can we do? Widows Walk Enterprise Fund has been self-sufficient for 23 years, is what's allowed us to grow this asset as a town. And we do have an asset here, and we just need some fine-tuning. It needs some TLC. It needs some improvement. And it needs to keep doing it on the back of golfing operations, and that's not lost on us. You saw, in the early days of our meetings, we quickly realized we need to invest time and help on the revenue side of the equation. It's a critical factor here. So even though it carried debt of $382 for 20 years, the committee felt it was prudent to cap it at less than half of that. We felt like going above half was, would be prudent, staying below half would be prudent. Talking to Jim, looking at the numbers, we think capped it at 1.5 or below is probably where we should be, and an annual spend of $150,000 or less is probably where we should be in terms of just rough earmarking of the way we look at the structure. That all fits nicely into current market rates where we could get, where we could accomplish those pieces based on preliminary research. As Mark alluded to a minute ago, there was an RFP approved a couple of years ago by town meeting. It just went out this week, so we can start getting some more information beyond what the committee can gather and start looking at how feasible that 1.5 number is, but our early research says that should be sufficient to get us there, keep another $150,000 cap. So what that leads us to, then, is when we get past that, existing golfing operations can fund that. Mark showed you some opportunities where things like fencing and cart paths could be improved. And I think if you've played there, you could also agree with me that a lot of the tee boxes could be improved. Those are not IGM expenses. Those are considered, you know, golf, golf course expenses or town expenses. So we need revenue to support that. So what we're envisioning is get the triple play in place, get that curb appeal going, make it more desirable where people come, start spending that money, and then we'll be covering the debt. And the reason we've capped it at 50% is it'll be more money to be able to do some of the operational things. So to be able to go out and do a punch list of, hey, here are the first four or five tee boxes we should fix. Here are the first pieces of fence we should put up. Here's the first cart path fix we should do. And have that prioritized list so Bob and his team can continually do operational improvements and do the maintenance and carry, and upkeep for the town. Again, IGM's doing a good job with what they've got now, but there's some physical capital expenses need to be made, and we believe by keeping the debt service low and the revenue increasing, we'll have some more operational capital coming in that we can do those other things to the course as well that, you know, don't return as much revenue, but are important as well in terms of the grand scheme of things. So to bring it all together, then, Widows Walk is an asset to the town. It's something that we can maintain, retain the value, and improve. It can improve on its own dime, so to speak, on its own operations. No tax dollars needed for that. So we're then here tonight for two things. One is to specifically and concretely ask for your support for the triple play in terms of moving this forward. Our goal, it is aggressive, but would be to get through this process and be possibly at town meeting as early as the November town meeting. We realize there's a lot to work to do between here and there. We'd like to try to do that. Love to hear your feedback on that concept, on the plan we put in front of you, as well as what we put together in the first five months of work as a committee. So with that, happy to take questions and hear your feedback.
Great. Great job. Who wants to start?
Sean. First of all, thank you very much. It was one of the toughest committees to pick who we're going to put on the committee, and everyone was as energetic as the next person. And thank you for Tony and Mara stepping up, trying to keep up with you guys meeting every other week. I first got elected, it just opened up. It was always an asset, right from the get-go, all right? What's in the RFP, is my first question?
The RFP is for to get a bid on the triple play at 1.5 million or less.
Okay. What does that include and where does the irrigation fit into that whole play?
So irrigation is, it was approved at town meeting last year. There, there was a study commissioned to do that, I think it was about $30,000 or $40,000 for that. So that work is still ongoing. However, talking to Bob and talking to those folks, it seems as though the existing irrigation has, can be extended, the life can be extended a bit. So we're envisioning, this would be in lieu of going out for that bond issue, we'll be looking for this one.
All right. Based on what Linda Ferguson had just said, we make decisions based on what we're told, all right? We were told irrigation has to be number one. It's going to fall apart. So I hope you're right in the information we had. We can get some more time out of it.
And Sean, before the, before this would be able to be done, we'll have that complete study completed. So if it turns out that that is, you know, overly optimistic, we would know that before this went out to, for spent. So, you know, the opportunity to juggle priorities if that was appropriate between now and then.
All right. And the one final thing I have right at this point is, maybe Bob might recall, but this was, the clubhouse was just the shell, to get started. It was meant to have been added on to. Monty or Dr. Price, Mike, do we have a set of plans or even artist renderance, what it could look like? And I don't know the answer to that.
Unfortunately, those were lost somewhere in the past few years.
All right. Okay. You know, but Bob knows what I'm talking about. This was just a...
Well, there was a CPC application waiting a couple of years ago as well, and at that time, there was general support for the concept and some of the things that were there, but a sense that it really should be enterprise fund, not CPC that's funding that. So we agree with that, but it's, at that time, I think the drawings were available and somewhere they've gotten lost.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about the funding or anything. It was designed to be added on to.
Right.
This was just the first phase, you might say.
Yep.
That's all I have right at the second. Thanks. Who wants to come?
I'll go. Sure, I'll go. Thank you. I know I've only made it personally to one, but been on many emails and looked at a lot of the data, so I think the marketing efforts are phenomenal, and obviously, you're seeing your returns. So thanks so much for taking all that on and doing that. I definitely, in support of the triple play, the only thing that I, I have a couple, couple of issues. Number one, I think, you know, you brought it up, safety, right? So I would like to see us prioritize safety as well, whether it's the fencing, the parking lot, et cetera.
Yep.
As we go through and kind of prioritize your triple play. And then, with regards to doing something immediately and taking care of some curb appeal, you know, I called Jim this week, you know, whose responsibility is it to whack down those weeds in the front? I mean, I'm about to go do it myself. Is it DPW? Is it the golf course crew? Who, who, I mean, that is simple. Just pull the weeds up. There's some beautiful grass there. There's some beautiful beach plums there. Where does that fall? Because that can be done in the next two weeks.
It's none of the DPW. If you set the DPW down and told them to weed, they would just pull up everything. I mean, it's just, it's what they do. They, they cut and trim. They don't weed and do that other stuff. So we are looking at doing some work on the parking lot, but it has to wait till July 1st.
Right.
Because we're limping to the end of the year on their budget.
Expenses, yeah.
So what we're going to try to do July 1st is do some cleanup and spruce up the front of that. We just don't have the funds to do it right now.
So it doesn't fall under the purview at all from the golf, the golf group?
It seems to be that it's part of the enterprise and there are no funds to take care of it, right?
It's not. IGM is responsible for the course.
So, yeah, IGM, as far as we can see...
Don't we have kids that work there in the summer? And grounds people that we hire, extra grounds people that come in?
They work for IGM.
Yeah, right.
They work for IGM, okay. Well, then maybe what we do is we put our heads together, we get some beautification people. I will, I know. Did you hear me? Did you not hear me?
Kim Jake Day.
We put our heads together, right? Didn't say you. Said, "We put our heads together and we clean it up." Because I think, to your point, that's an easy fix and shows a good faith effort that we're moving forward to do that, so we can get the parking lot done July 1st. I'm happy to help. Weed the island near my house, just add...
And just another note on that frontage, so it obviously needs that tender, loving So it obviously needs that tender loving care and there are two entrances. So if you're actually looking out, I would argue that the entrance on the left is an extremely dangerous entrance when you're coming and going, right? Because you come around that bend and let's face it, cars can pick up speed coming down that dripway. And you're trying to pull out, there's simply not enough time to stop pulling out into break in time, right? So that could address the safety issue there as well by getting ourselves one entrance a little more centered or to the front. That's actually gonna create some additional parking spots as well. So it's kind of a win-win deal.
And that's something that we could look at when you come back with the complete proposal, yeah. Sean asked a question about the RFP. That was my question too, what criteria? It's current criteria that's in there, right? Not from before? Okay. Look, I think you're on the right track and I appreciate that you actually are coming in for only 50% and saving some for operational. You know, that's, that's smart. Because I know you, you would all love to spell, spend every penny of it, so.
And more.
Yeah, exactly. I know. But I'm really impressed with this group. It's probably, you know, one of the most passionate committees that we have out there. I mean, you meet every other week.
Yes, we do.
That's a lot. And that's great, so.
We're definitely committed. I mean, it's a town asset and it can shine. I see nothing but upside with it. We just need to reinvest in it.
Agreed.
Yeah, I share your frustration, especially about the front of the course and the way it looks. But I also share the frustration of people saying, well, whose responsibility is it? And when you come to do these public presentations, that everyone always wants the thing that they're presenting to look the worst it can look. And so, you know, we have school buildings that have issues and all they do is go around and take pictures of the windows falling apart. So it, you know, I find that frustrating, that in order to get what you need, you have to make it look as bad as you can make it look. Widows Walk didn't look that bad from the front for years. So I'm just saying, I find that frustrating, that we even had ship-shaped day and that area looks the way it does. It just shouldn't look that way. I'm totally in favor of what you guys are talking about. My big question was the issue of the irrigation system that looked like it was gonna suck the money out of that course for years to come.
Yep.
So if we can, you know, not have to take that on or take it on, you know, repair it as need be and not have to invest 2.2 million is what I remember.
Yeah, exactly. So we need to understand that a little better. So, you know, I would argue typically the companies that are doing that type of surveys are the ones that want to install it and upgrade your irrigation system. So you have to have a balanced approach when you're looking at that. Now, we may find that there are some issues there that can be addressed, but we don't need a full-blown irrigation system. And frankly, from my perspective, investing that in the irrigation system, well, if people don't want to come in, it's really not, it's gonna benefit the regular folks like us that attend there. But we're not gonna get the bang out of that. We've gotta kind of address the whole package. But my hope is that we don't have to fully invest in the irrigation system right now. But to Mark's point, we'll have a better handle on where we are with that.
Yeah. We're glad that we, the committee got formed before that money got spent. I think it's great to get the study done. We're gonna have better date, we'll all have better date in a couple of months and that work is done. And then we can look at both these together and if we're wrong, then we'll flip it around. You know, we'll come back to you with a different update. But right now, it's trending that way. We think that the life can be extended with some moderate maintenance on it. And that, that would be great news, right? If we had already sunk to 2.2, this wouldn't be possible right now. So again, we're happy to be digging in and figure out what's there. Could you go back to the first slide with the rainbow?
Karen?
Just a couple of things. The, yeah, the irrigation which you've covered. So I think there's two tracks. I think the great, I love this group. I think your work has been phenomenal and you've given us a lot of information. There's two tracks I think Ms. Karen alluded to is getting on track for November for the triple play. I think that's a great goal to come before the town. But then we also do need to address the things for this summer. I know we gotta wait until July 1st. And one of the things I think is really important is the whole technology piece that you've done. I don't know, I don't know enough about how to build those, the website and pre, I don't know about the costs on those. But I would think that if you could tackle those as soon as possible, that would increase the bottom line before waiting for the triple play. You don't need a triple play.
So just interesting enough, our IT director is sitting here, Mike Mancello is here, so maybe the guy would give that...
And Mike was instrumental in getting us the slides up earlier.
He shared all this, so among the eight million things he's got on his plate, we can...
To my point, I mean, is there, are there funds in July?
So Karen, we even have a suggestion for that, if I may, if you don't mind. So Mike, my daughter is just grad, actually third year. She's a computer science major. So she's volunteering to help us with web presence, developing the application, using some canned applications, right?
That was my question.
That we can just customize and start to get that exposure. So she's committed to her dad to do that, so we, we're gonna keep the cost down there as well.
And I just had to cur, how many people have signed up for the punch card so far since you launched that? If you said that, I missed it.
I don't have the exact number. Bob, do you know?
That's really not an easy thing to track because that's like a, you know, the punches are good for, or a year from the time that you purchase it. So there's still are customers that are using the one that they started last summer or last fall.
Oh, okay.
So all I can tell you is that our revenue is up in that area over last year significantly.
You can't, you can't track time of purchase, like the first time you purchased it?
It's all in a card file, but it's, you know, there's...
It's not electronic?
No, no, not that, that's a...
We could automate that as well, so then we can, we can play with the data and look to see, you know, how it's doing. But I would say that just the socializing of that is promoting it. So it's kind of a win-win deal, right? So you go ahead and you invest upfront, you're probably saving 15% or upwards, possibly 20% by making that initial investment. Yet we're getting that cash infusion upfront, which when you go through a 50-day rain cycle like we just did, you know, takes kind of the edge off the front of that, right?
Oh, it's great.
Just one comment and question about the paving aspect of this, of this project. So if you're talking about closing on entrance and exit, which is great, do that ahead of time so we're not tearing up any pavement. And I thought it's on one of the slides, a maintenance of paving. It said on one of them. And I'd just like, it'd be similar to the parking lot. If it's done correct, you know, and it's done to the right depth, I don't think you'd really have to touch it for quite a long time. You don't have a lot of heavy traffic, it's just automobiles. And my last question was how are we doing with conservation on getting that?
Well, that's gonna add to the cost because you're gonna have to put in stormwater.
We have to do it no matter what? Okay.
So that'll add to the cost. You'll have to put in storm scepters and all those things. You can't just pave it.
Alright, okay.
So that will add to the cost. It's not a big deal, conservation will approve it, but it does add a lot of money to the cost, to the bottom line, right?
And then just, I asked that we make sure we don't want to have to change anything.
I mean, it's my understanding the pavement that's there was temporary paving done 15 years ago.
It's all reprocessed asphalt.
And right now, it's, so I don't know, I talked to Karen, I'm not sure what they have in mind, but they have a quick fix in mind to kind of clean it up and...
I know Monty did some research on it. My understanding was the temporary pavement didn't require the drainage underneath it that a real hardtop would. So maybe that's an option, right? So we kind of, I'm sorry, what is it?
They put dry wells.
Okay. So we may, we may be able to step that up at a little lower cost than going through a formal hardtop while we, you know, again, invest in the frontage and getting the clubhouse. Because frankly, that would probably, should be the last thing that's done once the clubhouse is completed and everything, just to kind of seal it off correctly.
But you'd be looking at kind of what you're looking at right now, I believe. It's reprocessed asphalt, so...
Well, that, that's the option and as Bob alluded to when he shared that information with us, it's gotta be done at the right time with the right heat, so it's, it's done correctly. I mean, that's an alternative. Best case scenario, sure, we'd like a professional parking lot.
Right, right.
So just a few quick comments to piggyback on, you know, this is long overdue. Sean and I have been doing this, actually you guys have an advisory as well. We've been looking at this for a long time, waiting for 2017 to get here. The things you're doing are, they need to be done and they're being done by the right people. I mean, these guys are the guys that play it. You know, Bob's there every single day. He knows that course like in the back of his hand. These guys play it two, three times a week. So they know it inside out and they know what, what needs to be done. The RFP will be done, when's that supposed to come back?
It'll come back July.
Yeah, we, oh, we July.
So the stuff that needs to be done are, is stuff that needs to be done. My concern was, you know, the financial picture of the, of the golf course has changed over the years. You know, it doesn't have the 380 grand anymore to pay that debt off. It'd be difficult because ever since the drought, it's, it's kind of taken a hit. I mean, the weather hasn't really cooperated. So, you know, my advice to you guys was to get together with Nancy, make sure that the debt structure will work because it has to be self-contained because it is an enterprise fund. And I assume you did that. And you have a model that works that can do the 1.5, 1.7, and that's great. And let's see what the bids come back in. Maybe we'll get lucky and we'll be able to, you know, do it on or below price. It needs to be done. There's no, there's no question it needs to be done.
Yeah. Certainly, Anthony, to your point, sorry for interrupting you. Your last three years have been challenging, as Nancy has effectively pointed out, the drought and just some really terrible weather on the weekends. But I would just caution everybody to not just attribute the loss in revenue to that. It's, to me, it's 50/50. It's very much the facility as well because it's, it's lost its shine.
Yeah. We'll build it and then we'll come, we can go with that. But no, I think it will and I agree with you. It has to be done. It's an eyesore. It's not living up to its potential. It may not double in revenue and it's not supposed to. You know, this isn't a profit center. This is an asset to the town that has to make money so that it can withstand the bumps in the economy and the bumps in the industry. But we're not looking to, you know, to make a million dollars a year on this golf course. You know, we want enough to maintain it at the level it has to be and have some in the savings account to, to deal with the ups and downs.
And know that we're committed to get every ounce of revenue we can out of there, so we'll try to get a million dollars going.
So the other thing that I wanted to bring up and that more brought up is that those safety concerns have gotta be addressed right away. I mean, I've played there, the ninth hole, the 11th hole, you know, people can get seriously hurt there. And so those have gotta be part of the RFP and there's gotta be fencing put up there to take care of that stuff. And frankly, we gotta get the DPW out there to fill the holes in the parking lot. Someone's gonna break an ankle just trying to get to the driving range. So somehow we've gotta just take care of the bare basic safety stuff right away. And then people were talking about the aesthetics of looking at it. I mean, I know we hired a couple 10 summer people, you know, we put that in to, to deal with just the aesthetics around the fields and stuff. This is easily, could fall into that purview of walking over there and weed back in for, for an hour or two, right?
This list keeps getting bigger and bigger.
They can stand on the street side and weed and...
Just to answer one of your questions, the RFP only deals with the clubhouse and the parking lot. It does not deal with the course at all. Okay, so that's gonna have to be a conversation with Bob and with our management company and the committee.
Well, let's see where that comes in. And I think that that has to be the next capital plan, if not infused in it, you know, see where the RFP comes in. But I think you all, I mean, at the meetings, you guys all pointed out, the last thing is someone driving off one of those hills.
Yeah. Was there ever fencing there and it's...
Well, yeah, so you could, if you go up and you drive around in a cart sometime, you'll see some of it's simply rotted away, gone or kind of falling down.
So why isn't that a part of the golf management?
Tony said he wanted to be part of the RFP. I said it's not part of the RFP.
No, I know.
That's with IGR and the management and Bob to get that done.
Okay. Thank you.
It's not the responsibility of the consultant, though. They just maintain the course. I guess that would be the capital plan of the enterprise fund to maintain the sidewalks and the...
You could argue some of that is maintenance.
Yeah, we could challenge some of that. I mean, I think they're getting almost, what is it, Jim, almost 700? I'm gonna let Bob do that.
Well, relative to the fencing, the fencing that was up there at construction would never stop a cart from going through. It was just the split rail type of fencing that they got rid of. So there's never been like guard rail fencing, like number nine, that could stop a cart from going over the hill. So no, we never have had any kind of fencing that would...
Structural.
Yeah, would...
And I think that, that just has to be the next capital project. It's gotta be, it's gotta be a safe course.
Yeah. I mean, a short-term alternative may be just some large boulders in key spots, right? That can prevent the car from...
You guys can come up...
Physically pushing that over and going down there.
So I think the committee's doing a great job. We've got a great marketing person that's, that's really hit it well and hitting all the markets. At your meetings, you're talking about all this stuff. You know, Monty's doing a great job organizing the group, a little loud sometimes, but...
I'm not done yet.
And his reply to all this keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
So, and you've got knowledgeable people there that are dedicated to it. So, and I love the idea of the, of the bringing some sort of country club feel to it because people want that. You know, you wanna go in there and feel special and play a good course.
You gotta have a resort feel to it, right?
Well, it sounds like you get the support of, of the five of us. Let's see where the RFP comes in and hopefully it comes in and, and under number and then we can see if we can get it, get it moving forward. Bob?
Can I just speak, because there's, there was a lot of concern about...
Just one, yeah, just so people know when they watch it, Bob Sanderson, he's the club bro.
It sounds like there was a lot of concern about the irrigation. And just add a little history with that. The irrigation was mentioned by IGM and they, at one point, they said that it has a useful life of about 25 years. And at that point, we're about 22 years into it. So they were just saying to start the plan. And that was never, ever my top priority for what that facility needed. I think that we certainly can make necessary repairs to keep that system working and doing the same job it's doing right now. The only major concern that we have would be water, water supply. And that can be addressed when we do the irrigation. So I think that actually is more important and there's, there's gonna be some discussions about trying to tap into the pond on number nine. If it tests well and at, at the time of construction, it wouldn't be very expensive to pump that up into our irrigation pond. As opposed to using the non-portable well, which is really giving us pretty poor quality water that is, is not particularly good for the grass. And as we went in the hard way, the DEP shut us down from using it, even though it was non-portable water, because they were afraid it would affect the groundwater levels when we most needed it. So it's not really good to rely on that. So at any rate, I would roll the dice there personally because I think we're gonna get a lot more bang for our buck by prioritizing the curb appeal and having a functional clubhouse. The, the lack of functional clubhouse is just, is just tying our hands from a lot of revenue sources. So I, I think, you know, if the unforeseen happened and we had another ridiculous drought like we did three years ago, you know, you know, then maybe we made the wrong choice. But I, you know, to me, that would be the, the risk that I would take frankly.
I think we all agree with you. Good. So we've spent a lot of time on this. I think you have the support. I'll give a couple of quick questions out there or comments out there and then we'll move on. Mark?
Thank you, Tony.
Just your name and a...
Dr. Arfrio. So I just want to put a little historical perspective on this. I was on the advisory committee when the enterprise fund was formed to develop Widows Walk. And we obviously voted for it. It's a good thing for the town. They have a golfer, they like golf, don't get me wrong. And I don't want to rain on any of the things you guys have done. I think it's great. The course definitely needs help and needs attention. What I'm, wanted to bring up was that when that was all presented to us, this debt was no problem. Putting money away for capital improvements was not gonna be a problem. That obviously didn't happen. They were down years, obviously the club, of course, did not make as much money. I'm not sure if they actually had to borrow from the town to help make debt service for a couple of years back when. Glad to hear that that's paid off. But this is a point in time where everybody, you know, expected that, you know, all these, a lot of approvals would be made out of free cash and, and were have been made along the way. And what I'm discouraged by is that there wasn't a capital plan in place to do that. Again, revenue solves a lot of problems. But I would strongly encourage any activity that you're planning to, any money you're spending, you're planning to spend, be preceded by putting together a very strong capital plan to address the needs of the course well for the future and factor that into your debt service numbers. And make sure that you can afford to pay for those things down the road without having to go back and borrow money.
Absolutely.
We heard an awful lot of the time from the planning town administrator about how much money this is gonna make and maybe returning money to the town. Clearly hasn't happened. So again, just word to the wise, if you will, I think, you know, capital planning is incredibly important situation so you don't end up having to go back and re-borrow money and then again, continue to shovel against the tide, I'd say.
I, as a geezer member of the...
Just wait one second.
I just, I have a...
Doesn't matter. Just raise your hand and say your name.
Call me when you're ready. Say your name. Monty Newman. Good Ellen. Grasshopper Lane. Good job.
The point you make is very good, but my concern is we as a committee can only do so much. Everyone I talk to in town, selectmen, town administrator, finance, everyone wants to do what we're proposing. But we as a committee can only do so much. Someone in town has to come to us and guide us through the next step. Advisory committee, capital planning, town administrator. We've got a, we've got a lot of approvals that have to, that we have to effect between now and November. If this is gonna become an issue at the November meeting. And I don't know who is going to give us the instruction to go ahead and do it. And is someone in management gonna work with this committee to help us implement what we know needs to be implemented?
So you're, you're, you're just about as close as you can get there. You've got an RFP out that's gonna come in with a number.
Okay.
And then Nancy's gonna look at it and see if it's financially feasible. And then it'll be presented to the town by probably one of you and one of us and someone from advisory. And the town will decide whether, whether it happens. So we're, we're kind of at the...
We're at that stage?
The point where it's, you know, it's either gonna happen or not happen.
I just want it to happen during my lifetime and I'm getting older.
What is it gonna cost? What is it gonna cost to do what we want to do and can we have that plan ready for the fall? And then the second part is, are we comfortable with where the revenue numbers are going to go forward in the fall?
That's right.
Are Nancy and I gonna say, we're gonna have to wait another couple of months and get some more revenue figures before we're gonna feel comfortable authorizing a 1.5 million dollar bond? Last month, moving in the right direction. Last couple of weeks, we've had good weekends, which are really important. But unless those numbers continue, and we had this conversation with the committee, you know, you gotta convince me, which means you gotta convince her, that those numbers are gonna continue and support that revenue going forward while at the same time allowing us to make a profit and put some money aside so in the future we can pay things with cash and not have to just always go back to the borrowing, so...
Sean?
I just gotta make one comment and just Mark reminded me of it, Mark D'Onofrio. And that was when we were building this, or the town built it and opened it in 96. Bob, you'll remember, there was a lot of competition. There were town-owned courses all over the place. And I, then the demand might have gone up and down a little bit for golf. But hadn't we, and this is just a comment, hadn't we started the town and built it when we did? I don't know if it ever would have opened up. There was so much competition at that time, I do remember.
There's still gonna be a number of courses that have been built since then, between us and Plymouth. There's gotta be a dozen.
13 courses in Plymouth alone.
There were some that were town-owned that didn't do so good, as I recall.
Many of them opened up after us, actually.
Right, but wouldn't you agree if we weren't ahead, a little bit ahead?
Yeah, I think we had a golden opportunity there and that's unfortunately, I, I'm gonna go back to the fact that we never really finished the curve. You know, we never had the curb appeal. And we never really capitalized like we think we're in position to because we were early to the party. You know, almost all those courses in Plymouth opened after us. I, I just wrote down in the last meeting, the conversation came up. And off the top of my head, I came up with 17 golf, 17, 18 hole equivalents that opened in a, in like a 30-mile radius from us since we opened.
Private, public?
Both.
Okay.
A lot of publics. A lot of publics. You know, I mean, Old Scotland was about the same time. Cushnet River Valley was after us. The other course in Bridge River, River Bank, that opened after us. Certainly some privates and you don't consider them competition, but I know a lot of our regular golfers have, have ended up at some of those courses. So, yeah, there's a lot. I mean, you just in Plymouth alone, Crosswinds, I mean, Pine Hills has, has two 18-hole publics. They also have a private 18. Crosswinds has 27 holes of public. And Laverly Oaks had 27 that's now downsized to 18. That's just in Plymouth alone. Indian Pond, you don't consider that a competitor, but you know, something, they've taken outings from us and things like that, so... You know, they all count. Corey, you know, Corey, I thought, I thought Corey Links, Granite Links hurt us more than anybody because we used to get more traffic from the city. And now that was convenient for them and, you know, they're making enough money where they can afford those side rates at, at that place now. They've all, they've all impacted us truthfully.
Yeah.
One just quick question. On the RFP, are there, was it structured so that there are add-ons, I forget what they're called, but... It alternates?
It's three phases. Well, there's three phases. There's the first phase, which is what we're going to have to bid for, which is a conceptual design and a cost and a kind of a picture.[1789.38]
And then phases two and three would be the actual design and construction.
Okay.
So. Just if I could add one point, so I think Jim Swann Armwood's analysis in terms of the revenue, but again, I would caution everybody that facility hasn't been upgraded in 22-plus years. So for us to expect this magical revenue boom to come along and make sure the numbers are trending, right, which I think they are now, but to expect us to go off the charts with that is an unreasonable expectation, again, because of the crumbling infrastructure. We've got to invest to get that yield back from it, right? So I would just caution you to keep that in mind as well.
But Mark, I think, I think I can, the committee understands that this needs to be self-sufficient and we're going to keep working on that.
You get it. Nancy's got to buy into it. We have to buy into it. And, you know, she's conservative by nature, which is what she's paid to be.
Absolutely.
And you've just got to get a financial model that works because some people don't think that a coat of paint is going to make somebody else come in. I, we all agree that it needs it. So let's hope the RFP comes back in, it makes financial sense, and let's get it done.
Despite the pictures we saw, the course is actually in pretty good shape.
Of course.
Really plain.
Yes, the water will do that.
Ironically, the drought has come back to serve us well because it was reseeded and so it's really established the base of the club. So you can actually see that now.
Okay. Thank you all very much for all your work and we'll see you when the RFP comes back.
Only an hour left. No, it is.
All right.
John, John Danny ran a tire ship. Oh, Tony did that?
You sold it. No, you sold it.
Okay, Nancy, hold. We're going to go over the transfers.
We're still meeting. We can't, we-
See you guys. Take care.
Tony, before Nancy starts, Mike Michel, our new IT director, is here.
Doing well.
Mike comes to us.
Guys, just, thank you.
Mike comes to us with a tremendous amount of experience. He comes to us from the private sector. I'd like to say he hit the ground running. He might say he hit the ground like he's falling into a giant hole. He hasn't bought him yet, but he's going to be a great asset. He's doing a great job right out of the gate. We're lucky to have him. So he's going to explain some of the stuff we have today, but I did want to introduce the board to our new Director of Information Technology.
Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I think we've moved up the ladder a little bit over the last five, six years, but it's always changing, so you'll be busy.
Remember when we were in advisory, there was no IT department. So come a long way.
All right.
So this evening I have before you some year-end transfers. They're a little earlier this year. Hopefully I won't have to come back before the board again, but there were some items that were time-sensitive and that's why Mike is here today. The very first item that you have on your listing is a proposal to transfer, let me just explain what these are, because some of you may not have seen them before. Year-end transfers, we can do from May 15th through July 15th. And under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, we can move things between budgets. We can't touch enterprise funds to general fund and we can't touch the school budget, but we can move things within our own lines. And it requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen as well as a vote of the Advisory Committee, a majority vote of both boards. So the first one that you have on your list is to move from the contributory insurance line item, which has a projected available balance of $95,000, to the information technology technical services line item, the sum of $25,920. And this is to cover the support agreement for the Simplicity OmniCube system, which expires in June and it was not budgeted. And this is why I asked Mike to be here tonight, because this is as far as I can take it.
I was going to say, what?
I know what it is, but imparting to you what it is is not a good thing for me to try to do.
What is it?
It is everything that you're looking at, everything that's, it supports the infrastructure for the town from a technology perspective. It's servers, it's the software that rides on those servers, it's the data. So any email that you're looking at, documents that are generated, it sits in these OmniCubes. So-
So they're hardware?
It's hardware. It is.
So it's a box?
Three of them.
Three boxes that host all of the operation?
Correct.
So we're replacing them or is this the maintenance on?
Maintenance agreement. Maintenance agreement expires today or this week?
Yeah, the third, yesterday.
And how long is it? Is this annual or is it more than one year?
So this is annual. So what happened was from, I've been on the job for three seconds, so, from what I can tell, it was originally purchased three years ago with a three-year maintenance plan. It has now since expired or just recently. It needs to be renewed in one-year increments. There's an opportunity to do more than one year, but manufacturer is shortening its life, so we won't, I think the maximum we're going to be able to get out of it is one to two more years.
So that's probably-
That seemed like a lot. How much does the box cost?
It was $100,000 when we did this capital project.
Per box?
No, for the three boxes. And the reason we did it was it's supposed to give us tertiary controls so that we would have, the original plan was to have one here, one at the public safety complex, and then one in another town, so that we would have redundancy and then tertiary.
Raid stuff?
Yeah. So one of the items that had come up, Bill had mentioned to me before he left, our prior Director of Information Technology, that the Simplicity operates on a Dell system, so Dell hardware, and it's been bought out by HP. So they don't want to remain, they want to migrate everything to HP's hardware. So they're offering significant incentives for customers to move over to the new hardware. And that's one of the reasons why Mike isn't recommending that we do anything more than the one-year option, because they may not support it, as you noticed in the, what was in your packet, that this has an end of life on it. So this is going to come back before you again as a capital project, because we'll have to do something, either move on to the HP project with the incentives because they want us to, or to go to some other type of solution, which Mike is going to be looking at. But that's the other reason why I wanted Mike to just be with me tonight to talk to you about this, so when it comes back to you again, you'll know why. And it's because these companies have sold their product line. The OmniCubes will continue to exist, they're just going to be on HP hardware rather than Dell hardware.
Any questions?
Nope.
So Mike, is that percentage at 25% seem a little bit higher?
So the rule of thumb is generally 20%. I thought I had saw, I thought I had seen some numbers that were a little higher than 100, but Nancy would know. So rule of thumb is 20. But they have, it's a captive, you know, captive audience, it's three years old. They have to support someone else's hardware now. HP has to support Dell, so.
Well, we can't go without it, so.
And the maintenance per unit is 8,600. So the maintenance for the three is what's getting it up to the 25,000.
Great. Welcome aboard, Mike.
Thank you.
You can ask Kate if you want, Anna.
For day two.
If he doesn't fasten his question.
I told him, 8:30, no problem. So the second item before you is-
I think he lives close.
The additional costs that were incurred for the sound system and the interpreters at the May 13th, 2019 special town meeting. Normally, we would try to work this out, but we're also going to have the additional cost of the recount. It's getting a little tight into the town clerk's budget. So I'm recommending to the board that we would take funds from the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator Litigation Line, which currently has a projected available balance of $43,000, and transfer $3,290 to the town clerk's support services. And that's the line item that pays all of her election costs from.
So the $5,000 that we were talking about for the recount will come from that?
This would help make her be able to make her lines work.
To do that, to make it work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions?
Mm-hmm.
Who, why do we have an interpreter there for the first time?
It was requested by a resident?
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Didn't know that.
And we had to have two because they can only sign for 20 minutes at a time.
Yeah.
Will we do it automatically from now on or just if someone may ask ahead of time, a day or so ahead?
Yeah, how much notice do they have to give?
I'll have to check. It's not a whole lot to get the interpreter service, you get it through the Commonwealth.
It's the scheduling that's the problem. I think it might have been requested before, but they weren't able to be furnished. That seems a rude way to say it, that the interpreters were not available. I shouldn't say furnished.
I have a question.
Ms. Carr?
Is the sound system, is that a permanent purchase or is that like a rental?
No, it's normally $2,000 per meeting per night. And we normally have an extra night built in, but town meeting went to two nights, so our extra night got used up. So when we had another special town meeting, we didn't have enough funds for that, the $2,000. And since they set up the other room, a secondary overflow room, there was an additional $350 charge.
Oh.
So the sound system is normally $2,000 per meeting.
And I just have to say from my vantage point, it was terrible. So I don't know what it was like for those of you that were sitting facing the other way. Maybe you could hear it better?
Yeah, it's bad where you're going to be because of where you sit in relation to the speakers. It's actually much better out.
That's my question. Yeah, I wonder if people-
Because I've wanted the sound.
Sit in the back.
Sound wasn't that bad.
Okay, on town meeting.
Yeah.
It was fine. I was sitting in the bleachers one night, it was fine.
Fine, okay.
Just where you sit in relation to the speakers are almost even with you, so.
Sounds terrible to me, yeah. Okay, good.
The next item is also a transfer from the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator Part-Time Salary Line to the Advisory Committee Part-Time Salary Line in the amount of $797. There's projected to be an available balance in the Town Administrator Part-Time Salary Line of just shy of $10,000. And this would be to cover the recording secretary costs. She's, because of extra meetings and Advisory Committee had a few extra meetings, plus we had an extra item that they had to consider, she had more time that was spent on her recording secretary duties. The next, we had this last year, which is a transfer from facilities, public buildings to two different facilities department lines. One is the repair and maintenance line and one is the building supply line. The current public buildings line has an available balance of $93,000. Kevin hasn't been able to get to all of the projects he wanted to get to because of circumstances that the board are aware of. And I gave you a lot of detail on this one, just to kind of see that the repair and maintenance line, if you went through the detail, there isn't one big thing I could call out and say it was because of this. It's a lot of, I actually did an analysis at the bottom of it, because it's just one of those fun things you can analyze, that the repair and maintenance, 63% of it was for repairs, 19.5% of it was for maintenance agreements, such as monthly elevator maintenance, that type of thing. And then 17% was for inspections and licenses. So the elevators, the boilers, all have to be inspected and we all have to pay license fees for those. So the biggest thing I can call out on this would be the overhead doors. And again, that's likely something that's going to come before the board as a capital project at some point, because the overhead doors are becoming a problem at the fire station. I believe it's mostly Station 1. And this isn't the full cost of the doors. Normally what's happening now is the fire station, the fire department is splitting the bills with the facilities department because they just can't support them because of the problems they're having with the doors. And then you see other things. It's spread across the buildings, some repairs to different items, troubleshoot problems. And the reason that we're asking for the $45,000, Kevin and I, is because even though there's still, there's only about a $29,000 deficit right now in the line, it's offset with other items, so it's not like we're running in the red, but the specific line item. He also has to deal with generator inspections in the last six weeks of the year and transferring all the buildings from the heat to AC, which never goes according to plan. It's never just flicking the switch. It's flicking the switch, nothing happens, flicking it back, kicking it, flicking it a couple more times, then calling the guy, whoever the guy is, to come and figure out what happened with it. As to one of the repair bills I saw go by recently, there was a bird's nest in the exhaust pipe. At least a fun repair bill to read, as compared to some. So that was on the repair and maintenance. The building supplies, again, it's, there's not one specific thing that's popping out. It is budgeted at $4,200 and when you consider all of the buildings that Kevin takes care of, that is not really a significant amount of money. So we're asking for a transfer request of $5,000 on that one. That budget was increased for fiscal '20. It goes up a little bit. The repair and maintenance line was not increased for fiscal '20, so we might want to revisit that maybe at a special town meeting and move some funds around within his budget to get that more along the lines of where it needs to be on an annual year-to-year basis so we don't have to keep coming back to it. So those are those two lines. And then the final line, it's for police overtime. We adjusted the fire overtime at the special town meeting. This would adjust the police overtime. They've had happily, I don't think they have any vacancies right now, but they've had four new officers that have had to go through the academy. So that means there's four officers, they're covering four on the street. There's two in the academy now and there were two in the fall. So the recommendation is for the Board of Health's regular salaries to be reduced, which currently has projected available balance of about $50,000. And that's because we did have a vacancy of our Board of Health Director. I did speak with our current Board of Health Director Drew and he is fine with this and supported the use of it. And it would be $45,000 to transfer to the overtime line.
Great.
I'm trying to take a page out of Bob's Vogel's book and just try to go slower. Trying.
Not at this time, Mike.
Yeah, it's late.
I can go faster.
Can I have a motion?
Move to transfer from the available fiscal year 2019 general fund budget lines as listed on the provided spreadsheet to other fiscal year 2019 general fund budget lines, a total amount of $125,000, $125,007 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, Paragraph 33.
Second. Second by Ms. Campfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Nancy.
It's unanimous. Great.
I'm here if you have any questions about the Recreation 20B exemptions that you vote every year. You normally don't, but I'll just sit here and look at you.
It's so many.
Great. So basically, there are about 20 or so people that work for the town in some capacity and work in recreation programs or other things, and they just have to fill out a form. Mike, thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And they just have to disclose that. So all the names are here, they, most of them are coaches that do summer camps, math teachers that do summer programs or after-school programs.
Motion?
Any questions? Motion would be great.
Move that the Board of Selectmen, as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, have reviewed the disclosure forms from the following municipal employees who seek to provide personal services to situat recreation. The exemption under Section, Paragraph 20B is approved for the following municipal employees: Andrew Barlow, Michael Barba, Caroline Burns, Aaron Colbert, Elizabeth Dorgan, Brian Kirkholm, Molly Scott, Christine Kane, Jonathan Schindler, Ellen Burke, David Jordan, Amanda Krugel, Craig Parkins, Matthew B. Poyer, Morgan Segaze, Lisa Howell, and Kathleen McCarthy.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Great. Now we're moving. Next item is a discussion vote for VERTEX contract for the owner, project manager, OPM, for the senior center, in the amount of $463,770.
This is just the next phase of the contract based upon the fact that the override passed, so this is the underside of the construction documents and then the actual construction so this is the underside of the construction documents and then the actual construction project itself. Vast majority of this is part of the $12.2 million.
And the rest of it's coming from prior-
About $11,000 balance in the current appropriation, so it'll come from that.
So... Actually, anyone have any questions? There was a date on here of March 20, March of 2021. Is that the completion date of the whole project?
Could be.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of, but we probably need to give our closure of it that time.
'Cause we leave it open.
That's everything. Punch-up, list, probably one or two. I think that's everything.
Yeah, the other thing I noticed, one of the larger lines, was the clerk is here full-time for 60 weeks, so we're paying somebody-
Somebody that's here on-site overseeing that project, that's correct.
So they're here five days a week, 40 hours a week, for 60 weeks.
For a year, yeah, estimated.
I just asked Karen, will it be John from Vertex, John Lemieux?
I don't think they'd replace him at this point.
No. No, John.
Oh, Steve, you mean. Steve Kirby, not John. John was in Public Safety.
Yeah, no, I just, alright.
No, it would've been probably most likely State Steve. I don't think they'd replace him.
And the amount, what, I had two numbers here, so $463, but then somewhere on here it was $529.
Plus that was the full amount of their contract.
Yeah, the first two, excuse me for interrupting, Mr. Chairman. The first two phases, the feasibility, schematic design, and design development, those were two separate contracts which have already been awarded and funded out of that other capital project. So you're just funding the bottom three.
So that, maybe that's where the five-something comes, Tony. It's the trust two plus this one for the total value of the contract.
The horrible grid that's hard to read, the very bottom number is $529.
Right.
$530. That's for, they're from beginning to end, they've already done two phases.
So they've already paid for part of that.
Oh, yeah, you can't read that.
Okay. And this is basically design, architecture, design, working papers, bids, and monitor the whole project.
Everything from here to the end, that's right.
And the only other thing on top of this is actually the construction.
Got it, which is in here, yep.
That's another part of the $12 million. And this is for the middle school also, and then gates, the-
The gym.
remodelations. That's all. Any other questions? Motion?
Move to award a contract to the Vertex Companies, Inc., for owner's project manager, OPM Services of construction documents, bidding, construction, and closeout relevant to the community campus for senior center recreational facilities in the amount of $463,770. Such vote contingent on outcome of ballot vote recount.
That was my other-
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Any from the floor? Any questions? Okay, so obviously we're doing a recount, and this is gonna be contingent of the recount coming in.
We added that today.
I thought of that last night.
Yeah, thoughtful.
Mike?
Mr. Chairman?
Do we have a second?
Wait, one sec.
I moved it. Was there a second?
Yeah, Sean.
I just wanted to comment that Kathy Gardner, her office staff, are doing a phenomenal job. You have registered, as we did yesterday, you're letting three questions in with, and she didn't have the answers for them. I think within three hours, she emailed us the answers to those questions. So they're really on top of this, and she is very determined that this is gonna be done correctly and be done appropriately.
Sure.
Great. Yeah, we talked about it a little bit at the beginning, and it's, it is what it is, and we have our expectation of the count, I mean, the vote comes.
One more question maybe, what about? So, if we're contingent and that won't be done till the 20th, this won't be signed until? It won't be, we won't sign it until the 20th?
Won't go into effect unless the recount passes. See if vote doesn't take effect until, we'll hold it. You'll sign it tonight, but we'll hold them.
Okay.
Again, as I said earlier, with an optocom scanner, it's not gonna change that many votes, so I don't have any doubts that the vote's gonna come out the same as it was. Just better to be proven than have the guy say, "No, you want me to sign the contract."
Great. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Don't see any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, 5-0. Great. Now we are on to the next topic, which is construction administration contract to Barmen Hendry Archetype, Inc.
Everything I said about the OPM? Same thing, except not without the construction oversight of 60 weeks. They're not on-site where the OPM is, but this is for the construction documents, the bid documents, and then the bidding and the construction.
So the first group isn't gonna do all the construction documents, these guys are?
Same, the same architect.
Right.
Yeah.
What, first group was the OPM Services, so they assist with? The architect is the one responsible for drawing the construction?
Right, so the second one is the architect, the first one is the management.
Manager.
And the OPM almost oversees the architect on our behalf.
Any questions?
Dr. Page, I wanted to point out that it also includes a traffic study, so I think that's nice. That's a good-
There were three things, right?
Yep. $176?
What were the other? The-
Too far.
There it is. Traffic study, the security features, infrashear fixtures, the soil borings, and the additional site survey. Great, and this went out to bid. This was the lowest. How did we get?
This was RFP, so he was not picked based on price. He was picked based on qualifications, yeah.
And has he worked together with the OPM before? Have they given him? Great. Mike, any comments from the crowd? Alright, can I have a motion?
Move to award a contract to Barmen Hendry and Archetype, Inc., for construction administration bidding assistance and pre-qualification for the community campus for senior center and recreational facilities project in the amount of $340,500. Such vote contingent on the ballot vote recount.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great. And the last topic for tonight is a discussion and vote to release library project contingency funds in the amount of $13,875.
This is really just to complete the project with the walkway and the automatic controls for the door downstairs, for lack of a better term. I believe this would allow the librarians to open and close that door from upstairs, which is not possible right now. You control the funds, you have to release the rest of them.
How much funds are left after this?
You do have $100,000 left, because you have yet to have the generator brought back before you.
So eventually we'll spend it all, right?
Up to the board. Right now you are under budget.
Yeah.
Well, we need a generator.
The question's gonna be whether you do the pot, the pot generator or the full generator. Kevin just hasn't been back to work enough to come in and get that done.
So this includes the construction of the ADA path?
And the door controls, as Jesse's been talking about.
And the door controls for security?
Yep.
And does it also do the landscaping stuff that we've been talking about? That, all the trees and bushes and stuff that-
That's not part of this.
No, but they do have $2,400 set aside to do that, and they've been talking about, with working with the DPW to get those trees installed.
Where's that?
The couple trees died out in front of-
To the right. When you look out the front door to the right of the parking lot, there were several trees that died.
Oh, really?
But there's also the ones that are the buffer between the houses across the street and-
Are those covered?
Yeah, that's what the $2,400 is for. It's part of that settlement to replace those. Then there's that tree out front that's coming down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but we also talked about putting some bushes or something there to kind of buffer that area, so-
I don't think that's been factored in yet.
Just the 24, we definitely have the $2,400 for the tree to replace the dead trees.
That's on the side. That's on our front.
We've been talking about that for a while. Where do we get that?
I think it was, nothing was gonna get done, Tony, until the walkway went in, then they're gonna take a look at it. But I think the big thing is we've, we've had a lot of requests to put a light at the entrance to the-
I was gonna ask about lighting.
Parking lot.
Yeah.
And we've resisted that, given the complaints we've had about the lighting. We don't wanna put another light there.
Can't it be motion?
No, they want a, they want like a streetlight marking the entrance, not a motion light. They want a light-
Oh, you mean down, oh, okay. The driveway entrance, sorry.
Well, we're gonna have to figure that out, 'cause there were trees and bushes in front of there that created a buffer that are now dead, so we gotta get something back up there. You know, the one-
Yeah, arborvitae cure a lot of neighbor concerns. So I learned that in Norway. Just plant enough arborvitae, you can't see anything. As long as they're dead, don't eat them. So, yeah, we'll take a look at that, but nothing was going until the sidewalk was done.
When will it be completed?
They're ready to go, I think they're- Possibly by the end of the month.
Right, Jessie was saying she wanted, she's, probably the first concert, it won't be done, so that people have to park over at Central Field. That was the timeline when she was giving us, so-
That was not the last meeting, so.
Yeah, probably July. But I, I think those trees were, there was also a private donation, a memory garden going in, and that was part of that conversation of when the, after you put the walkway in, then put all that together, and a lot of that's donated. But, yeah, the buffer has to be redone.
Here is one other item. I don't know. $4,200 of this, and it's up to the board whether or not they wanna do this from this, from the project funds, or whether they wanna do it from DPW road money, is to do the crosswalk on Branch Street.
Branch Street crosswalk.
$4,200, oh, 'cause you gotta do curb cuts.
So the contractor, who's gonna do the $18,800 to do the walkway, provided a quote to do the crosswalk as well for $4,200 and do the, for lack of a better term, the yellow things.
The tactile strip.
Thank you, that would be the better term. All I think was the novelty.
Where's it gonna be?
I don't, I couldn't tell you where it's gonna be, or wherever it was supposed to connect.
The crosswalk?
The sidewalk will end on Branch Street, and then it crosses, there's a sidewalk on the other side going north.
Going north, yeah.
Right, but where is it gonna cross before the driveway?
To the south of the driveway.
And there's curb cuts for the, in the sidewalk now?
Yeah.
'Cause on the other side, there's no, there's no curb, I don't think. I think it's just a-
It's just dirt there. Yeah, I don't know.
Is that a good price for that?
I don't know, and it's whether or not you want, whether or not you want them to do that work as well, or if you wanna say, no, that's DPW, that's the road, they need to take care of it, and it's nothing to do with the project. It's just, the project ends with just, written on their side of the road. But that's why, I just wanted to call it out so that you didn't take a vote and realize that you were voting for that as well.
Right, so that's in that $12,000 that's requested.
Yeah, it's called out in the narrative, but I don't, I just don't know which way the board feels about it.
And we could add it to, it's the same contract, though.
Yeah, the contract, that was a little bitter, said that they could also just work $4,200 if the town wanted them to do it. I don't know what DPW would prefer to do it.
I think if they're there-
It has to be done.
Just do it.
I mean, yeah.
And then you're gonna have, once the DPW are gonna get to it-
Yeah, I'd rather just get it done.
Get it done.
I just wanna make sure that wherever it's going across is not-
Correct spot.
Right, is not where, next to the driveway of the neighbor of-
It's not. So their driveway's much further down. It's, so it's on the, it's on the opposite side of the abutting neighbor. Across the drive, our driveway, the library driveway from there.
So if you're walking from the field, you go across our driveway and then it goes?
Nope. You're on the near side of the field. So it's on the field side is where the sidewalk is, and the crosswalk would be.
Oh, really? Okay.
So the neighbor across the street, though.
So across the street, their driveway is much further south on Branch Street.
Can't be much further.
Sure is. Yeah, there's only a fence right there across the street.
Yeah, their fence.
If you're on the field side of that corner, the Central Field side, so that this side.
Well, here it is, right? That's the entrance to the library.
You got Google.
With the walkway, you have to, because it's probably to the sidewalk that's gonna be going down to-
Yeah, yeah, no, he's talking about the driveways. We don't want it to, you don't wanna put a crosswalk that ends up in front of somebody's driveway, 'cause that's not fair.
Yeah, I'm looking at this.
Is that what you were describing?
Yeah, you got Googleer.
Is that what you were describing?
I was trying to, but I'm tired.
Doesn't show the butts across the street. I think that's what you're talking about.
Wait a minute, I'm looking, oh, yeah, so.
I walked that way a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, yeah, but I think this is, can someone tell me what this road is here?
It's Branch Street.
I don't think it is, that's why.
Is that Branch up there?
Is that Branch, or is that, or is that the road between Central Field and the library?
Central Field Road?
Yeah.
So confused.
Whatever you call it, yeah, Central Park Drive.
Where's the building? This is so confusing.
Building has to be up here, 'cause it's the crosswalk.
Yeah, and that's the crosswalk.
This is up here. The street up here is Branch. Has to be. That's the crosswalk, unless it's-
What are you crossing up against?
Right into Stevens driveway.
No, his driveway's down here.
You sure? Alright.
So I have a question about the door. Mechanization of it. It's supposed to work so that if someone comes to that lower door, that the librarian's up on the upper floor can hit a button and let them in? Can that be? Can anyone use that door?
Yeah.
So, do they not think they're gonna be driven crazy?
No, it's, they'll be, I think they're gonna do signage. Karen, the problem is that- No, that door, there's no security, right.
Comes from-
Right.
Even when there's a public meeting in the lower level, that door is locked.
Right, because there's no circulation desk in that area, so that you can't monitor who's coming in and out, and you need to do that for security.
But wasn't the whole idea of having that door, having doors between that room and the community room, so that when the library is not open?
Right, but then people come, you come and get access, you can, I forget what it's called, but there's a way to unlock it for those things? Yeah.
I understand. I'm just saying, I think they're gonna be driven crazy if people start using that lower-level door even when it's locked, unless you're saying that only someone who's disabled can use that entryway.
I think there'll be signage. I'm not 100% sure on that, but I'm pretty sure they're putting signage that says that if you need access from, I think they'll, they have to do it because otherwise there's no way for people to have access who are handicapped from the Branch Street.
Well, the same-
They're gonna have to figure it out.
-problem is for regular, non-disabled people.
Right, well, they're, they're supposed to walk up to the main entrance.
Well, so there's gonna be a sign that says, "If you are able to walk-"
I don't, I don't know what the signage is.
They're gonna judge them. They're gonna, they're gonna look at the video and they're gonna say, "No, you can walk."
Well, they, they can buzz in, but people don't use, that's, people don't use that entrance, they, 'cause the entrance is the main entrance, you gotta walk down to that.
I walk down that all the time, going to that community building.
But when there are meetings, she's talking about when there's like public-
There's meetings, it shouldn't be locked.
But it is.
But that's the point, it is.
That's the point, it shouldn't be locked.
We just need to talk to Jessie to make sure that when there's public meetings, that it can be unlocked. That's, that's the solution.
Because the whole idea of building that building, the way it was built, with the conference rooms on the first floor-
Won't disturb.
That you, that, and that you can leave without having to go into the library, and therefore meetings can happen after the library closes. That's the way it was sold to us.
Yeah, yeah, but it was never intended that, if, the library access was always supposed to be at the right point of entry, which is on the upper level. So even if you're coming, people aren't coming to meetings at 9:00 at night.
Well, some people come into this building at 9:00 at night and expect to get into a meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, we're having public meetings there.
Just your name and address. Excuse me?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Patricia Lambert, Alexandria.
Yeah, right.
That was to leave the building, not to come in. That's why that access was closed like that. But if there's a public meeting in that building and it goes after 8:30, they should be, people should be able to get into that meeting.
Right, that's the, whoever's running the meeting has the responsibility of gaining that access, which the library staff will train them how to-
I know that little thing, I know.
The little thing, whatever that thing's called.
But I'm just suggesting to you that if-
Yeah, I don't know.
There's an issue of handicap access. We have handicap access to the library from the upper level.
Yes.
So this is a matter of making that door able to be opened, so someone who's handicapped can get in. But I'm telling you, it's locked all the time anyway.
You don't have handicap access to the upper level from the street.
Right. If you're coming from-
The grade up is too high, so when we're gonna put in a handicap walkway in the front that will get you to that lower, and that's where you'll come in.
And that is their entrance into the library because they can't get up, unless they're in a vehicle and park in the-
That's the whole path. That's where you get the path.
So this is the path for people from the street, sorry.
Go that way, why doesn't it go this way?
I was too busy finding the pictures.
'Cause it goes down.
Thank you for making that clear.
Oh, that's it, right there.
No, that's a tree, I think.
So how far is it from Stevens driveway? Is it far from Stevens driveway?
Okay. Let's do the, let's, can we have a motion to include the, what is it, $12,000 if we want to?
$12,000 includes the $4,200. Yeah.
I move to release the library project funds in the amount of $12,875 to complete the ADA walkway, crosswalk at Branch Street, and install a video intercom system and remote access controls.
Second.
My first second.
Yes.
Second by Ms. Conley.
I think all other motions-
Mark today.
There you go.
Further discussion?
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that Ms. Conley make all motions for the rest of the night.
Okay, great, so now we are on to new business.
No, you have the appoint special legal counsel for senior center recount. That was on the amended agenda.
Okay, I didn't see that one. Does someone have a?
I do. Do you want to look at it? Don't we just, you know, all right. Move to approve an appointment of special labor counsel for the recount of question one, dead exclusion from the...
Legal counsel, not labor counsel, legal.
Oh, it says labor.
It says labor.
This one says legal, that one says labor.
There's a labor with legal.
Okay, let me start again. Move to approve an appointment of special legal counsel for the recount of question one, dead exclusion from the Situate Town election held on May 18th, 2019.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, you want to give a quick?
Yeah, um, town council has not done a recount before, so true, uh, true. Kathy reached out to Rich Bowen, who is a municipal council in other towns, he's done many, many of these. He has volunteered to do it, however, only the board of selectmen has the ability to retain council. So you have to prove the fact that she's going to use Rich. I talked to him today, he's, already talked to her, got everything set up, so it should go pretty smoothly.
So does he just basically have to sit there and watch?
Yeah, he, he watches if there's a question, and he explains how to do it, and gives advice to the town clerk as to what to do at that point.
Rich, thank you very much for dedicating your, or donating your time and energy to this effort. Any questions? Those, questions from the audience?
Um, Gordon Bryce, Bill Margol. I think it's wonderful that Rich is, is offered a service facility, managing services of the town. What will our project, what other expenses be?
About $5,000.
Seeing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all opposed? It is unanimous. Now we'll move on to new business. We have a discussion vote for a one-day wine and malt license.
Would you like a motion?
Go ahead, Karen.
Uh, oh, I think Karen finally, she caught it.
Move that the board of selectmen approve one-day wine and malt licenses to tailor-made bartenders for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on June 15th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Move that the board of selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to Reva Restaurant for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on July 14th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Move that the board of selectmen approve one-day wine and malt license to Kate's Table for an event at the Situate Maritime Center, July 18th from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Moving on to a discussion vote for election poll workers.
All righty, got to find it first. Want me to, want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Move to appoint election poll workers from the town clerk's supplemental list and the Democrat list. Do I have to read them? No.
No, that works for me.
Okay, all right. That's my motion, sir.
Second.
Let's see, is this for the special election?
This is for the recount.
The recount, I mean, yeah. Is there a Republican list?
Yeah, that's odd.
I believe that Republican list was already served.
Sorry, done, yeah.
That's right, it was.
These are for the year, so.
Oh, it is, oh, it isn't just for this.
Yeah, it's not just for this event.
Oh, okay.
Oh, oh, this is the annual.
Great, for any discussion? I had a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, five to zero. Okay, now we have the board of selectmen liaison positions.
Yeah, thank you, much easier. Are we going to decide tonight?
Do we want to?
Everybody's been emailing and asking.
Oh, really?
Well, you're very popular, we do ask.
It's usually, why aren't the, you know, when, please tell them not to come.
Well, do we want to look at this and mark them up and do it next meeting?
I think that would be a good idea.
Someone's do that.
Homework.
Homework.
We also need a person, well, we need somebody right away, that's usually the chair for the Plymouth County Advisory Board, they're emailing, emailing, emailing.
Well, the chair doesn't have to do it.
Well, I was it last year, when I, I took it on for two years, I did an extra year, so.
She's done it.
Done my duty. I did it when I was the chair and when I was the vice chair.
Okay, I will do it if no one else wants to do it.
All right, if you insist, Tony.
Yeah, I think, I think you'd be terrific at it.
Thank you so much, Karen.
Really enjoyable.
It is.
And also, the Cituate Harbor Sustainability and Resiliency Master Plan Task Force that's being set up, is in your packet?
What?
I would like to invite everyone who's elected to serve on the downtown harbor sustainability and resiliency master plan task force.
I've read it, I'm willing to do it.
How is that different from the master plan committee? Is that diff, I'm confused.
This is, yeah, this is more...
I'm sorry.
This is looking specifically at Cituate Harbor and what we're going to do.
Oh, that's right, that's right, sorry.
More coastal related.
I did read that. It's the meeting that we went to. It was part of. Yeah, that's part of that.
But it's also got a lot.
No, I know, but it's got to do with that thing that...
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, yeah.
So, move to appoint Karen Conley to serve on that committee.
Second.
All in favor?
We don't have to vote.
I know, but you went there, so I just followed.
And the rest of it, do you want to do on June 25th?
Yes, please.
Is that okay with you, Lorraine? Is there anything else that, where somebody needs?
I'll just put it off, though, June 25th.
Well, who's, who's asking?
Is there someone, yeah, that needs?
Advisory, gotten too many emails from now.
Well, that's always the chair.
Nope.
Yes, it is.
Unless you want to just go through John's, I don't know. It's up whenever you can. I serve at the pleasure of the board of selectmen.
All right, I'll do. Leave John on it.
John, guess what?
Okay, I'll do advisory. If they're, do they have a meeting coming up?
Thursday.
Can't make it.
No, they canceled it.
Oh, they canceled it?
Oh, lucky you.
Monday instead.
Definitely can't make it.
Definitely can't make that one.
Maybe you could phone in.
So we'll go through the rest of them the next meeting.
Anyone else screaming? About wanting one?
Everybody else I can hold off. The lowest through the biggest ones that are already.
Great. All right. Any on reports? Any, who is on reports? Okay.
Yeah, well, I have one.
Go ahead.
Affordable Housing Trust, they're going to put together some information with regards to options for us to take a look at, hopefully get on the agenda in the next couple of summer months with regards to the old senior center. Because I would imagine we have to talk about what we're going to do with that. Right, so they're looking into a bunch of different solutions to share with the board, so hopefully we can get them on the agenda.
Using that building?
Well, it could just, just all different, you know, not...
I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they're one of many groups that should probably get some...
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Any other? Okay, one, one thing I'd like to request is, uh, we can talk about it before we do it, but I'd like to get the EDC in here to start talking about the use of the Gates building. You know, the B wing of Gates, and start getting that group thinking about opportunities for that property. And actually, probably should get Affordable Housing to think about it, too. You know, there's something that we're going to have to deal with, provided the counts go, you know, go the way they did at the ballot. We should start getting other groups involved to start thinking out of the box in terms of what we can do with that property.
But not just the B wing, the A wing as well?
The A wing's being used by rec in most parts, but you could think about, yeah, I mean, you have to look at it.
Yeah, you can't stay like that forever. Um, can I also, since we're talking about committees, Jim, what do we need to do to pull together the cable commission committee? As a liaison, I'd like to pull that group together.
You're going to get it all together.
All right, yeah, we, we need to pull them together, I think, and go over some stuff. Okay.
So, Lorraine, could we send an email out to the EDC and have them pick a date when they can come in and we can kind of talk about that? Maybe we should have a meeting.
Do you want a separate meeting, or part of your regular scheduled select meeting?
Maybe we should bring in...
Couple of groups.
Couple of groups and talk about it. Why don't we hold off on that for a minute? But we should probably have maybe three or, two or three, four groups together planning and see what, what the steps are going to be with that. But let's wait till after the recount is done. All right, correspondences.
The Cituate Library Foundation still has a few tickets left for their gala this Friday to end their capital campaign. There's a guest speaker, live and silent auctions, appetizers, cocktail attire is appropriate. You can go to their website if you'd like to attend.
Are you objecting to cocktail attire?
I have no idea what cocktail attire is.
Okay, well, it's a suit, somebody call Jim tomorrow and help him.
I'm sitting on my back deck in a pair of shorts and a tee shirt and having a cocktail.
That's one version.
That's my version.
Any other?
He's not my date. Okay. We've already talked about the recount, there's a, there's been a notice of a public meeting for June 20th at 12:00 p.m. right here. Oh, no, at Cituate High School, Jim, to do the recount. And was there anything else in the packet, Lorraine?
No, that's it.
Okay, that's all of our correspondence, Mr. Chairman.
Great. We can do approval of the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes for May 21st, 2019 board select meeting.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Okay, so this will be, were you here, you were my last?
Yes, she was.
Was she listed here?
Yes, so warmed up now.
She's even quoted in here.
No, but she's not listed as present. Great, motion, second by Ms. Curran, all in favor? Wait, so we may have to make that.
Wait, discussion, we need to amend that Karen was present.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes for the board of selectmen, May 21st, 2019, as amended to reflect that Ms. Conley was in attendance.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Great. And just a quick other business, I want to congratulate all of the 2019 graduating class. On Friday night, they had a great ceremony over there. I couldn't be there, but Karen was there.